To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. On Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with announcements and I have a few. Oh, I think that's on there. I think that's on the pack. So the Master Plan Steering Committee will be hosting a public meeting at Smokestack Roasters to review and gather final thoughts from the town on the master plan that's been in the works for the past couple of years. So if you want to participate in the master plan document, then you should attend this meeting and it's going to be tomorrow, October 22nd, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And again, that is at Smokestack Roasters. The library has a lot going on this month as they celebrate their 20th birthday. So they are having three anniversary versions of their scavenger hunt to explore each area of the library, so the adult, the teen, and the children's room. And they can be completed and you can enter into a prize drawing. Visitors can also donate to support the Friends of the Library using the Library of Services fundraiser. In exchange for their donation to the Friends, visitors will be able to claim donated skills and services from members of our community. The many and varied services are on display as you walk into the library, including dozens of cookies, yard work, professional consultations, and more. And finally, the celebrations will draw to a close with the library's 20th birthday party. And that's going to be on Friday, October 24th, the 24th, at 5:00 PM. Complete with cake and fanfare, the winners of the scavenger hunt prizes will be announced. And of course, there's the jazz ukulele concert as well. And in addition to that, next Monday, October 27th, is the library's Halloween costume parade. It's going to start at 11:00 AM and it's for ages up to five, beginning at the library. And you will head over to other town buildings for trick or treating. It looks like we're having some IT issues.
The whole computer's rebooting.
Okay.
You're on. It's just you can't see.
Well, we do have some people on Zoom, so I think I'm just going to hang tight so they can rejoin so that the folks on Zoom can see. We're good?
No, please wait.
Okay. I'm waiting.
I wonder if you ask them, can they see you?
They're not going to be able to see because Public Access isn't in the Zoom channel.
I see, I see.
So I'm going to hold off because we'll probably have public comments. So we're just going to hang out for a little bit. Hey folks, I just want to let you know if you are on Zoom, we're just waiting for Public Access to rejoin. They're doing that right now, so just hang tight for a little bit.
If it goes one more minute, you're going to want to make that announcement.
Yes.
Recording in progress.
Okay, it looks like we are back. I see Pac here and we can continue. So it is 7:05 PM. I just want to acknowledge that we do have a public hearing right now. We're going to do public comment first and then we'll move into the public hearings. Any public comment from the public this evening? Mrs. Lockwood, come on up.
I'm sorry, I have a, I have a public comment, but a resident sent me a message asking me to read it.
Okay. Name and address first, though.
My name is Anna Lockwood and I live on 91 Main Street. And I first going to read a message from Linda McDonald. She lives around 104, 1004 Mass Ave. And she wrote, "As a homeowner in the middle of the town, I'm very distressed to hear of the proposed restrictions to any changes to our property. This affects a small segment of taxpayers. Why were we not notified individually? I'm against this and I am not available tonight, so please consider this as my, as my no vote. Linda and Richard McDonald." Thank you. So, on to me. So, at last night's APDC meeting, the Chair of the Select Board, the Chair of the APDC said, and then lastly, I look at the Select Board and say that if there is been some failure in communicating this issue with residents, it hasn't been with the Architectural Preservation Commission. Because when Anna, he says Anna, but it's Anna, when Anna sent that email to you all at the Architect, and at the Architectural Preservation, the Select Board, I said, "What are you going to address this?" And had the Select Board embraced that email from her, as well as the email from me, the town wouldn't have spent town council time to come up with a bylaw that's probably not going to get voted before the citizens. And that's a failure on the part of the Select Board. Verbatim from what the APDC Chair said. According to the APDC Chair, their failure to engage, their failure to engage in public on this matter that impacts residents, it's your failure. The lack of engagement with residents, the public, the lack of public process and understanding of the full consequences of these changes would have, would have on residents should be enough for the Select Board to not include this article in the town meeting warrant. The fact that the Chair of the APDC is laying this blame at your feet should be enough for you to understand the power of the Board, your power. If these mergers go through, any appeal that any resident would have against any decision the Historical Commission would have, we would need to go to a Superior Court. You want to, you know how we wanted to change windows at Ritter? The residents' choice would be to file a lawsuit on Superior Court. That's how Historical Commission appeals last. Lastly, this spring, you voted to not add the override to the town elections, even after town meeting approved the override. This Select Board here, as it's made with five members, overrode the wish of town meeting and didn't take action on the override. Why is it that now on this subject that affects a very specific group of residents, you don't feel you have the same authority to stop this article from going forward and protect the residents? So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lockwood. All right, any other public comments in the room? Not fast enough, Nathan.
Hi, Lee O'Brien, 92 Lemmonster Road. I'm going to apologize in advance because I just learned yesterday through social media, which we all know can be deceiving at times about this HBD proposal. And I just want to ask, is anybody sitting up here affected by this proposal? Any of you live in the proposed historic district? No? No? Okay. I just feel like as elected officials, you should want for your neighbors what you would want for yourself. I don't think any of us want to have restrictions put on our homes. My husband and I have worked very hard here in Lunenburg for 22 years. We've been very happy here. But when we go to sell our home, it's our nest egg. And I was a retired, I'm a retired real estate broker and I could tell you some really nightmare stories about trying to sell antique properties. But anyways, I just wanted to express my grave concerns because I do think that it's discriminatory. I think it's divisive to our community to sector out a certain section of people in town and treat them differently than other people. And I also think it's abuse of government authority. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment.
Will we get more information, like a map and what the actual restrictions are going to be at some point? When will that be?
That, so the Select Board will send out a warrant for what is actually included in the warrant, whatever that may be. That's what this Board is going to do in terms of actually communicating those things. That, I would point that to the APDC.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Lockwood, come on up.
Nathan Lockwood, Nathan Lockwood, 91 Main Street, Lunenburg, and also a member of the Architectural Preservation District Committee. So yes, on this matter at hand, this warrant article that would consolidate the, which would move the implementation of the Architectural Preservation District from the Architectural Preservation District Committee to the Historical Committee. You know, I basically concur in sentiment with what's been said here. And there was a meeting last night where, where there was a vote on this issue. And there was a lot of public, there was, you know, several folks from the public, a couple of members of the Select Board participating at the meeting. It's my understanding the Select Board's received communication, other email communication from the public on this. And it's pretty clear that some discussion needs to be had on this before anything's done. And there's reasonable concerns. I mean, first of all, the texts of this warrant article haven't been made public yet. You know, I'm glad, yeah, I'm glad someone on the committee did take the initiative to explore this because I think we know a lot more about it now that they've done it and we're looking at it. But what we, we're still learning new stuff about it, like what the previous resident said about the, about the change in the court venues for disputes. That's something that was really just learned in the last day. And I have, there was also just beginning to be explored as, you know, town council, I think dutifully updated the bylaw for what was requested. That involves some changes in verbiage in the bylaw in addition to the committee in terms of what is being managed from architectural to historical. And that might be a small thing or it might be a large thing. I think it, we're just, again, beginning to unpack that. Although the town meeting is open to all residents and, you know, it's a very open forum to discuss these things, it's really not a great place, I think, to be hashing out details of a bylaw that is, the previous speakers have said, has tremendous impact on people who do live in the district. That's better done in, you know, more open timeframe prior to that time where there can be focused discussion on that without, you know, making people sit in town meeting for two hours and still not having the resources and time to be able to research and explore things that come up in that process. So I think, so, you know, I am a big fan of the APD bylaw. That's why I joined the committee. I don't think it's perfect and I think one thing, I think there are legitimate concerns. I think, I think although the bylaw has done some good things, I think there have been, there's, there's been some cases like the recent example with the Ritter Library and upgrades the town wanted to make that became way more painful than in my opinion they ever should have been or in was not the intent of the bylaw to inflict that type of procedural pain. I think there's clearly some things that need to, that can be done to improve it, increase confidence, and give people the surety that, you know, there'll be expedient process, that they won't be in convenience for doing real, you know, pretty normal things to their, their homes, basically, you know. So, and I think, so I think we can achieve that, but, but I think it's, so I think until we have that public forum, until the public gets to weigh in, and possibly until we get to address some of the known shortcomings, we shouldn't, you know, kind of go forward with this bylaw, not, not to the warrant to town meeting, until it's able to be vetted more. It's just not ready for primetime now. There's a lot of risks to pushing it through too soon, even if we, even if we think we know, you know, even if some folks think they know it's fine. I don't, just based on what's come to light recently, I don't think, I don't think we should rely on town meeting and, you know, as in the limited time that's there to, to try to get this over the finish line. And especially as the previous speaker said, the trust gap is huge. It's just, just out of respect for the folks that, that are most affected by it, it is a thing that has a differential impact. You know, I'd like to see this by, this bylaw that's there. I'd like to see it continue to be there and continue to be improved. But if it's, if this is done in a way that's, that, you know, the public feels like they're ignored, then, then that bylaw is going to be at risk of, of the future. So, you know, I won't say too much more. I'll just say one of the reasons that bylaw is important is that it just puts some basic protections in for historic structures, like non-demolition, which was introduced at a time, not to, not to make residents change what they're doing a lot, it just, it was introduced at a time that we really, as a town, expanded what can be done, the possibilities of what people can do with their properties in town center, village center, district, coincident with the Architectural Preservation District. And so we just wanted to make sure that there were not, with these new possibilities, wouldn't it sometimes be commercial incentives that rapidly resulted in rapid loss of, you know, Lunenburg's historic, you know, character of the, of the town center? So that's, that's all I'd say. My, my ask is, is basically, yeah, please don't include this on the warrant this time around. And, and afterwards, you know, support a process to figure out with, with, you know, the public, whether it's led by the planning board or led by the APDC or jointly, to figure out, you know, what the best conversation is to figure out where to go next. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Any other public comments from the room? Yep, come on up.
Hi, my name is Sharon McCullough. I live at 1010 Mass Avenue. I've lived there since 1980. I love living in Lunenburg. I taught here for about 30 years. I retired in 2017, right before COVID, thankfully. I have two daughters who teach still in Lunenburg, so I'm very invested in the town. About a year ago, I put a new porch on my home in the back of the house. And the contractor had taken out a building permit, had everything set, purchased all the materials, had a crew working at my house when we were instructed to stop work because the proper paperwork had not been given to him, nor filled out, obviously. That was an inconvenience for me and for the contractor and for the men who were slated to work for that period of time. And so I really don't know much about, I'm just learning about this proposed change. And my experience with paperwork as it is says that it's a headache. And to think about any other restrictions or limitations on what I would like to do in my home, when you've been in a house, if you've lived in an older home and a fieldstone foundation, the house is more than 100 years old, there's always work to be done. There are improvements that you want to make, there's just routine maintenance. And the thought that I may not be able to do, I try to be very tasteful about what I do and be consistent with where we live, but I really would not appreciate more restrictions in, in what I'm able to do. I appreciate the work that you're doing, but the fact that I have not been consulted, that I'm just learning about this and being a resident for so long, it's, it's offensive to me to think that I wasn't included somehow in, in the discussion. And so I would, I would ask that this not be on the warrant, that you would wait until there's opportunity. I know, you know, there are many things that people want to do and whenever there's some changes and it relates to in a butter, I get a notification that says there's going to be a hearing or something and come in and, and listen. And I thought, why wasn't there anything like that related to this? So, you know, I need more information. So I'm asking you, and I, I want to thank you, Mr. McCullough, for responding to my email so quickly that I sent last night when I first heard about this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments from the room? All right, we'll move to Zoom. Harry, go ahead. I think you might be muted. Hold on one second. Let me, I think I have to do it on my side.
I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can't hear you, so to the booth, I think we might need to turn the volume up a little bit.
I don't think I'm muted.
No, it's a sound issue in the room.
Yeah, we got to turn the volume up on our side a little more.
Okay, thank you. I'll speak loudly.
No, a little louder, please.
I will speak loudly. How's that?
All right.
I still can't hear that.
No? Okay. Sorry, we, hold on. We got to turn it up a little more.
A lot more.
It sounds like it's just coming out of the TV, not out of the speakers.
Yeah.
Can we try again?
It's just coming out of the TV, I think, not the speakers in the room.
Yeah, it's not routed through the actual audio in the room.
I actually don't know that this might be necessarily being.
Test, test, test.
I don't know. It's through the audio. I think we're just hearing people. I don't think we have any audio in the room. Are these working? No, these aren't working. No.
We're going to try to get the audio.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yeah, no, we can, we can't hear you, Harry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm using the microphone, so I know it's not me.
Something.
Did you try to restart?
Hmm? Yeah. Nobody did, I think. Okay. Yeah, when it comes on, it's going to really come on.
Should we check now?
Can you hear me?
Okay. Go ahead, Harry. Can you try again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
No.
Not really, no.
It's a little weird.
Sorry, we're, we're working through it. Hold on one second.
No worries, thank you. I'm all but screaming, so I know it's not me.
Can someone talk?
Hello? Test, test, test.
We, we need remote.
So, all right.
Have you got to talk?
It sounds like it's all good with the feeds. It's just in the room?
Okay.
All right, it sounds like there's some power issue in the booth.
They can hear us online?
Yes.
They can hear the tapping of the mics, too.
Mm-hmm. So, it's just the room. All the feeds are good, so I think we're just going to keep going.
They can hear us on Facebook and on the TV.
All right, Harry, I'm sorry about that. So you can go ahead, just start with your name and address.
Sure. My name is Harry Kubetz. I have two properties in Lunenburg. My official residence is 125 Howard Street. And I also own a home at 944 Mass Avenue, which is within the historic district of the town. So I'd like, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So I first want to say I have the utmost respect for the Select Board. I admire all of you for taking on an almost thankless job for our town. So, most appreciated. With regards to what we're talking about, the APDC to Historic Committee, this article was developed, in my opinion or to my knowledge, without public notice or input. Residents were never invited to discuss the implementation or consequences, and the article's language, to the best of my knowledge, isn't even on the town website. The Select Board was told this is a simple merger, but it actually changes the bylaw from preserving the town center's character to creating a full historic district, placing new burdens and potential financial stress on property owners, including myself, with the Superior Court as our only recourse if we have a problem. The Select Board has a duty to protect all residents. If this process was not properly vetted, this article should be rejected or at least delayed and not be put on the warrant to safeguard residents and maintain public trust in our local government and the Select Board. The APDC, to the best of my knowledge, is an unelected Board. The definition of taxation and regulation without representation. And the Select Board, the elected Board, should intervene but is advocating their duty. Perhaps this should be in front of voters, but in the spring at a regular annual town meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Harry. All right, Mr. Bowen.
Good evening. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I just wanted to comment.
All right, hold on one second. I'm sorry, we got to, we got to figure this out. We're just going to take a brief recess.
Sure.
Whatever that was, that's something. Whatever you did, does make something.
Do it again. In this room.
All right, I'm going to do a mic check. Is that working? Oh, okay. That's something. All right. Mr. Bowen.
I'm still here. How are you?
All right, oh, it looks like we got it.
Can, can Mr. Kubetz go again so we can hear you?
Do you want to let Mr. Kubetz speak again so that the public can hear his comment?
Yeah, we can hear you now. You just got to start with name and address and then go ahead with your public comment.
Yeah, my name's John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I just didn't know if you wanted to let Mr. Kubetz speak so that the people there could hear it again. That was just a question, that was all. That's up to you. Just to mention, because I heard Select Person Morse say that.
Yeah, I will.
So, yeah, so in any case, I think that's a good idea. So, because obviously he has a vested interest. So last year, Mr. Scullumbrini had raised this issue of the merger of the Historical Commission and the APDC. If you remember correctly, which you may not, but in public comment, I used to build custom historic windows and do historic restoration in downtown Boston, Lexington, Clarkland for a number of years. And we used to custom build everything because it was required by the Historical Commission. As far as the concerns of the residents when it comes to taking action in the Superior Court, that is true of taking action in the Superior Court. However, there is a preliminary action that can be taken prior to that, which is you have to basically, you have to solicit the state Historic Commission for a variance like you would on any kind of zoning regulation. And they would look at, over their rules, like people have true divided lights, okay, are a requirement in a historical district. The thing is, is that an actual true divided light has a single pane of glass, but you can get a variance for a true divided light, okay, that is made of wood but has an insulated piece of glass. You can also get a variance to put in like a true divided light, like a Marvin or Pella or other historical type aluminum window to be able to put into your home as well. So there are options for variances that I don't think that information is actually being passed. When you apply for any kind of construction work in historical districts, one, you have to be certified historical contractor, okay? Certified, obviously, you have to be on a list. You have to, you know, have a certain amount of insurance, certain amount of protection, and there's agreements that are signed by contractors. So there are restrictions to that when they hire people to do things when it comes to historical preservation. when it comes to historical preservation. So there could be some concern there. But this was actually instituted publicly over the last year, because I remember commenting on it. So I don't think anybody was trying to hide anything by the back door. And even though it's an appointed board, an appointed board accordingly still has some authority and oversight, okay, when that appointed board, uh, uh, is, uh, run by the state. So the Historical Commission is a private nonprofit that is operated under state rule and guideline. So the state rule and guideline makes them appointed by statute. There's no choice in that. So there is plenty of representation, uh, and even though that they're not elected officials, I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Harry, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to you. We could sort of hear you for the beginning part of it, but just so, uh, everyone in the room has a chance to hear your public comment, I'm gonna, uh, give it back to you.
Okay, uh, can you hear me now?
We can hear you perfectly now.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, and sorry to be repetitive.
It's okay.
I, I just wanna start by saying I have the utmost respect for the Select Board. I admire all of you for taking on an almost thankless job for our town. Um, it's most appreciated. Um, the article that we're talking about, um, as far as I know, um, was developed without public notice or input. Residents were never invited to discuss implementation or consequences, and the article's language, to the best of my knowledge, isn't even on the town website. The Select Board was told this is a simple merger, but it actually changes the bylaw from preserving the town's center's character to creating a full historic district, placing new burdens and financial stress on property owners with the Supreme Court as their only recourse. And I did not start out by saying my address. My legal address in Lunenburg is 125 Howard Street, but I own a home at 944 Mass Avenue, which, um, I would be directly impacted by what we're talking about. The Select Board has a duty to protect all residents. If this process is not, uh, was not properly vetted, this article should be rejected, or at least not be put on the warrant, um, to safeguard residents and maintain public trust in our local government and the Select Board. The APDC is an unelected, appointed board. The definition of taxation and regulation without representation. And the Select Board, the elected board, that can intervene is advocating their duty. Perhaps this should be in front of the voters, but in the spring, at a regular annual town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Harry.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just gonna. Are you there, Mr. Peace? If you're talking, you're muted and we can't hear you. All right, we'll come back if you wanna make a public comment, 'cause we're not hearing anything. All right, I'm not seeing any other public comments on Zoom. Any public comments from the board?
I have just a quick one. Um, for those that aren't, you know, I see, see a couple new faces here. I would encourage you to watch the rest of this meeting. This is, um, a topic that we're gonna be discussing later, so I will hold my comments for that time. But just encourage you, if you don't stay, to watch the meeting at a later date.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments from the board?
I'm also gonna hold mine until we discuss the article.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Hello?
Mr. Peace, there you are. Go ahead, name and address, and then you can make your public comment. Are you still there?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Are you there? All right. Not hearing anything. All right, so we're gonna move on. So we do have a public hea-, we have two public hearings tonight. Uh, we have two poll petitions. So the first one is a poll petition for Townsend Harbor Road Plan Number 979-L for the proposed relocation of Poll Number 14, 13 feet of, on the property line. This is approximately 1,959 feet from Massachusetts Avenue and approximately 331 feet from Woodland Drive. So I will invite Mr. Kimball from Unitil up to the podium and ask the clerk to read the public hearing notice.
In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Second Floor, in the Joseph F. Bellotta Meeting Room, Lunenburg, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, upon petition of Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company for permission to erect or construct in a location for a line of wires, poles, and such other fixtures as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line for the transmission of electricity upon, along, across, or under the following public ways of said town.
All right, thank you, Ms. Emke. So you're moving this pole 13 feet.
Yes, it's for property lines. There's gonna be another home, uh, 126 Townsend Harbor Road. So we need to be able to make sure that we don't arrely cross another person's property, which would be, uh, I think it's technically 116 now. Uh, that home's already built. That has electricity, so we need to be able to move this pole to be able to serve the new home that's gonna be built without arrely trespassing.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just to the town manager, we have everything we need. It looks like the full packet's there.
We have the full packet. You have a report on both this, so I'll just speak to both of them, but from the, um, building, uh, uh, from the DPW director, that on both, uh, this petition and the one that you're about to consist, uh, consider, that he has inspected the low, proposed relocations and has no objection or concerns with the move.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this poll petition? Anyone on Zoom? I'm not seeing any. Okay, if there's no further questions from the board or their public, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the proposed relocation of Poll Number 14, 13 feet of the property line?
So moved.
Is there any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to the second public hearing now, so I'll ask the clerk to read the second public hearing notice.
Okay, in conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Second Floor, in the Joseph F. Bellotta Meeting Room, Lunenburg, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, upon petition of Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company for permission to erect or construct in a location for a line of wires, poles, and such other fixtures as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line for the transmission of electricity upon, along, across, or under the following public ways of said town. And this is, um, proposed new poll number 44A, approximately 2,882 feet from New Townsend, New West Townsend Road, and approximate, approximately 996 feet from Sequoia Drive, uh, location as shown on the supplied maps.
Okay, great. What do you wanna do for this one?
So this one's gonna be an additional poll. So Poll 44 would stay where it is, and then we would put another poll due to the angles. We would, uh, put 44A. That's also because of property lines. If we served from 44, we would be crossing property lines, and this customer wants to go underground. So underground or over, we can't cross someone else's property. So we would wanna put an additional poll, 44A.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this one?
No.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on this poll petition? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously, and the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve the new proposed poll number 44A?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. All right, great.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight, and thanks for being patient.
It's all part of the process.
Exactly. You, too. Okay, up next, we have earth per, earth removal permits, and we have one for Jim Latanzi, 780 Northfield Road. This is permit number SBER-25-7. Uh, so we didn't consider this one when we were doing the other earth removal permits, uh, but we have the application now. We did have the building commissioner here during our last meeting, spoke to it, had no concerns at all. Um, but the applicant is here, and if there are any questions from the board, uh, you can go ahead and ask him.
I have no questions. I'll ask a major's question, everything submitted.
Everything is in order. Um, there was a little bit of the, so why this isn't before you at the previous, uh, meeting for renewals? There was a little bit of confusion about the timeline of how long this permit, um, ran through, and Mr. Latanzi is almost done with his work there, but he needs a little bit more time in the remainder, remainder of the calendar year. So when the building commissioner had gone out to inspect, that's when this discussion surfaced, and this is really just to get him to finalize and complete up the operation, as far as I understand.
Yes, correct.
Great. Any questions? Anything else you wanna say? All right, so I will move to approve the earth removal permit for Jim Latanzi, 780 Northfield Road, SBER-25-7.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thanks, Jim. Have a good night.
Okay. Up next, we have a discussion with town officials on warrant articles for the special town meeting. We have a couple people, uh, that are here to speak with us tonight, and we are gonna start with the principal assessor. We have Linda on Zoom. So Linda, do you wanna talk to us about, uh, 41A deferrals?
Uh, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, good. Yeah, so, um, this article, um, we currently have a 41A clause, but the maximum income is $20,000 on that, and, um, we would like to increase the income limit on this amount. Uh, and, um, I just wanted to confirm, I know Jen was trying to reach Adam Costa to just confirm. We have a, a little bit of, uh, information we're trying to verify, because, um, the way that it is worded from the state, and I will read this, uh, actually, why don't I read the article first? Um, so it's Article NN, and this is to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, to increase the maximum income qualifying amount, which is currently $20,000 for a single and married to match 2024 Massachusetts Income Tax Credit Breaker maximum qualifying eligibility as follows. It's single from $20,000 to $72,000, head of households from $20,000 to $91,000, and married couples from $20,000 to $109,000, and this would be for fiscal 2026. Thereafter, then, the current maximum income amount for qualification for circuit breaker would apply to each category for 41A, or take any other action relative thereto. So as I mentioned prior, the statutes whereby the qualifying homeowner can defer and delay paying for their property taxes until the property is either sold or the applicant passes away. Uh, for Lunenburg, the income limit has been fixed at $20,000 for nearly two decades, and this article would allow the maximum income to increase annually to accommodate inflation and other economic factors. I actually tried to reach the attorney of the day, because there is just a question that we have on the income limit, uh, from the state, and, uh, what I was able to find was if, if this is exactly what it says, uh, the, um, stat, it's, the clause is a locally adopted income limit cannot be more than the income limit that applies under the circuit breaker state tax credits for single seniors who are not heads of households. So we need clarification on whether or not there's a cap of $72,000, meaning that the single rate of $72,000 would apply for a single head of household and married people, or, um, whether or not, you know, married or head of households wouldn't qualify. So I wasn't able to find that out from the attorney of the day, and I know Jen was actually gonna, with Adam Costa, to see if he could clarify that. So that's the only thing that we need clarification for this warrant. And it is a little bit confusing, because the, the law isn't really clear as to what the circuit breaker income would apply for, because it says the limit is for single seniors who are not head of households. So what does that mean? That's what we need clarification on.
Okay, and I'm assuming we're getting that clarification now?
Yeah, so just to clarify for folks that are trying to follow along here, that don't have the document in front of them, um, the circuit breaker has three tiers of income level. One is for single, one is for head of household, and one is for married. Um, the Board of Assessors, in bringing this article forward, was trying to have, I think, the most, um, comprehensive and, um, go to the limit um, of all, of all of those as possible. That's their intent, so we know what their intent is. It's to maximize it up to the circuit breaker, if possible, in each of these categories. In looking at the language of the statute, the clear read, it, it seems as though that you cannot bring anything beyond that $72,000. That's gonna be answered by, that question went out to, uh, Attorney Costa yesterday. I'm assuming that he is, uh, working on this, uh, and other items, but, um, I don't see this being an issue. It's either gonna be that those two numbers are deleted, and we can only go to 72, or that those numbers remain.
Okay, great. All right, thank you so much, Linda.
You're welcome.
Any questions on this article for, uh, the principal assessor?
No.
No?
All right, well, I'm not hearing any. Well, I wanna thank you for all the work that you and your team, as well as the assessors and council on aging members have done for this. I think this is going to have a huge impact for seniors. I'm sure a lot more people will qualify, uh, and I think that's great. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, there also is, um, another project, the DOR directives, that we funded at annual town meeting, that we're trying to bring someone in-house on to temporar, temporarily to work on. Can you, um, describe what that work will involve?
Um, yes, we actually have to do a full neighborhood review, um, of our current neighborhoods. Um, well, our, our neighborhoods currently are one, uh, which is the waterfront, 1A, uh, 1B. So 1A, 1B, and one, excuse me, 1, 1A and 1B are all the waterfront, uh, neighborhoods. Uh, we have Neighborhood 2, Neighborhood 3, Neighborhood 4 and 5. We need to actually look at those neighborhoods. Neighborhood 3 is the majority of the town, uh, and, um, I don't think the neighborhoods have actually been addressed for several years. So the DLR is requesting that we re-categorize and actually take that Neighborhood 3, uh, kinda have some sense made of it, 'cause right now, it, it takes up more than half of the town. Um, and in addition to that, also address the other neighborhoods as well. So this, um, this position would allow us to do this in-house, um, and actually assist us with that.
All right, thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda on the DOR directives?
Maybe not for the principal assessor, but for the town manager. Is this under Article D?
No, we had, we had originally talked about that. It's in, um, the position and grade article for Q, uh, creating a, um, temporary special assistant for the assessor, and the compensation of such is employment agreement.
Okay.
So it's to create the position in the SAP for this temporary task.
And, I'm trying to get to Q. Is, what's, do we know what temporary is? Do we know the timeframe?
Uh.
Time length?
I, I don't think that we really, until, I, I don't think so, but I think, Mr. Chairman, to the assessor through you, um, Linda, do you have a sense of how long this project may take to complete?
We have to have it done by, um, 2029. So we would like to start it, um, as soon as we can. Uh, as far as a timetable, I mean, we've, the data collector and I have actually started looking at some of the neighborhoods and analyzing some of the sales. So, um, at this point, I can't really give you a timeframe. Uh, we would just like to start it sooner than later.
I, I was thinking more the endpoint. Are we looking temporary for a year, or?
Oh, well, I think the first phase of this is gonna be actually to kinda determine, uh, the delineations of the neighborhoods, um, reorganize them, and then from there, it's gonna entail some inspections. Um, so I would say the first year probably will be going out, looking at the neighborhoods, like I said, re-categorizing them. at the neighborhoods, like I said, re-categorizing them, determining what they are, and then from there, probably the second year would be a lot of the inspections. So I would say realistically, probably by year three at the latest, we would have this completed.
So I think that, so there's pieces, the way that, there's a project that needs to get done by the reevaluation, before the reevaluation, the full reevaluation. This one piece of the project, addressing neighborhood codes, was initially contemplated as putting out an RFP.
Just this neighborhood?
Just this neighborhood code for the 27.5.
So it's still 27.5?
Well, 27.5 was folks, let's be clear about what that was. That was folks saying, I don't know what this would cost, and let's get an appropriation, and there was a number put forward, and that, and we created the RFP, and we advertised the RFP, and we didn't get any.
Yep, just for the neighborhood.
Just for the neighborhood portion of it, right. So this is kind of this Phase 1. So by creating this temporary position, it allows us to take that work and have it done in-house by an employee. We have at least $27,500 in funding to that effort, but I think that this is something that, as Linda is envisioning it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that by bringing it in-house, this isn't going to sit on one person's desk. This is going to be a team effort that's largely supported, though, by one person doing the yeoman's work. Until they get into that work.
We don't know how long it will be.
You're not going to really know. So how long this is going to take?
And what happens when the 27.5 runs out?
You will be seeing additional appropriations for the set future meetings.
I'm just wondering, how do you write an employment contract without?
Six months at a time, three months at a time, with possibilities to extend. Yep, not an issue.
Okay.
I do, Jen, that is correct. I do think the biggest part, Phase 1, will be just determining what these neighborhoods are, looking at the largest neighborhood, and re-categorizing that, because that is something that, I mean, it's, like I said, it's more than half the town, Neighborhood 3. So we need to look at several factors, and that's something that will probably be the biggest part of it. I'm hoping after year one, we'll have a better idea, but we're going to have to do inspections as well, as part of this process, once we get all these neighborhoods determined.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that when we talk about these neighborhoods and neighborhood codes, I think it's a little bit abstract in some ways, but Linda, I think you had described, if you take, without talking about specific neighborhoods perhaps, but off of Mass Ave, that there are a lot of neighborhoods that have been recently constructed off of Mass Ave with a very varied housing stock that's in the rest of the neighborhood, and they're all lumped into one neighborhood. And so it's looking at things like that to say, do these belong in this neighborhood, or is this really a different area that needs to be broken out into a different category? Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. And we might have more than just the five neighborhoods that we have right now. Really is five neighborhoods that we have, commercial being one, we have along the waterfront, zone, again, Zone 3 has been the predominant for the town, but again, as Jen mentioned, there's a lot of neighborhoods grouped into that. We may want to look at the historic district and have that be a neighborhood by itself, and right now, that doesn't exist. So that's something that would need to be addressed. All of these need to be looked at, and analysis needs to be done on them.
All right. Any other questions for the principal assessor while we have her?
Just wondering if, how do you ensure there's any consistency if it's three- or six-month employment contracts? Is no guarantee that it would be the same person each time? Is that true?
There's no guarantee that the person who currently is being contemplated is going to execute a contract. So, no, there's no guarantee that somebody does this for a three-month, six-month, one-year period, and something happens in their life personally, and we're not pivoting. I can't guarantee that somebody's going to be with us permanently in any employment context.
So do you think there's a pool of candidates that are willing to take on an assignment like that?
I think that there is a pool of retired assessors who would be willing to take on that assignment.
Okay.
Better than nothing, I guess, right? We tried the RFP, that didn't work, and try and something else?
I think if this doesn't work, right, we're going to be back, so the RFP didn't work, I think that this has strong possibility with the way that Linda's assembling it and contemplating it with the team, but if it doesn't, I think that we possibly are looking at a plus-one add for, to get this done.
I did want to mention one thing. The biggest issue we have is we just want to have consistency, and I think by bringing this in-house, Denise and I both experienced appraisers, I think it makes sense, just based on the past history and things that have happened, that if we do this in-house, it's going to be consistent. And that's really the goal of our department, is to have everything be consistent.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Linda, for coming in tonight.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I hope you have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, so up next, we have the Chair of the Architectural Preservation District Commission, Tony Skolnbrini, and then after that, I'm going to bring up Richard McGrath, the Chair of the Historical Commission.
If we're to Richard first.
You want, that's fine, I don't have an issue with that. Before we do that, however, Ms. Emke spent a lot of time doing some in-depth research, and she put together a lot of notes on meetings of the APDC and the Historical Commission. Because of the open meeting law, we weren't able to distribute this before the meeting to members, so I'm just going to pass this down so that everyone has one. And if we'd like some time to review this before we get into our meetings with Tony and Richard, then we could recess for just a couple of minutes, so we could read them?
Eight ten.
Is that something that we'd like to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're going to take a recess, just for five minutes, just so people can read through this and maybe have some questions.
I interrupted.
Glenn, Renee?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So, we're back from our recess and it looks like we're gonna start with the Chair of the Historical Commission. So, I have a few questions that I'm gonna ask first. And then, I will give you the opportunity to say whatever you want if you think there are things that we didn't cover. And then, I will open it up to board members to ask questions and then we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, can you tell us from the perspective of the Historical Commission, what is the goal that you want to achieve with this merger?
The goal is simplicity. There's two boards doing, two commissions doing the same work. So, in order to have a more concise commission, the Architectural Preservation District Commission to merge.
Do you frequently have quorum issues? Is it something that the Historical Commission experienced?
That is, yeah. Over the last fifteen years, we've, we've never had a, a full commission in the last fifteen, twenty years. And over the last, a lot of the members have been elderly over, over that time. So, during the winter and stuff, it's, it's tough for, to have a quorum. So, a lot of times, there was a, a lack of quorum.
Okay. So, is it fair to say that you're looking at this as an effort to consolidate the volunteer personnel so it's easier for you guys to meet?
That's one point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if this passes, the Historical Commission would be responsible for enforcing the Architectural Preservation District Bylaw. The decisions made under this bylaw can only be appealed in court, as we have been told. So, they shouldn't be taken lightly. What training has the Historical Commission done as a group to familiarize themselves with the content of the bylaw so far?
Well, I, I'm the
Of course.
The appointee to the Architectural Preservation District Commission. The bylaw, the APD bylaw, requires one member from the Historical Commission to be appointed to the APDC.
Have you guys reviewed it in meetings or anything like that? So, then, the full membership is familiar with the contents of the bylaw and able to enforce it?
I don't know with the, no.
Okay. Is there any sort of plan for the Historical Commission to allow members to familiarize themselves with the bylaw?
That would be coming up, yes. I was on the, I was the chairman of the Architectural Preservation District Commission during the formation of it. So, we spent two years forming and, and creating the guidelines and the rules for the district.
Okay. So, out of curiosity, how would you go about training members on the bylaws? I'm assuming some of them aren't too familiar with it.
It's not that complicated, a bylaw. It's simply a matter of reviewing it. They all have experience with historical matters at, with the commission and, and the so it's really, I don't think it's a big deal to do that.
Understood.
Yeah.
So, I was at the meeting last night. I think the vote for the Historical Commission was through two to one? Is that correct?
Yes, that's
Okay. Can you tell us?
One member was absent.
Okay. Can you just summarize what the perspectives were on the Historical Commission? Maybe why one member didn't vote for the merger to go forward?
He had listened to the, to the debate. So, he was torn between voting for it or voting against it. I, I just told him to, you know, vote, vote the way you feel. No pressure for it, yeah.
All right. Well, I'll pass it off to you if there's anything else that you wanna say.
Yeah. The Historical Commission was started in June of seventy-nine under state charter. It was a lot of hard work to create a National Historic District during the nineteen-eighties. Seventy-seven buildings and houses were researched, photographed and documented. Forms were filled out and submitted to Massachusetts Historical Commission, where they're on file today. The Mass Historical Commission reviewed all the forms and the requests for National Recognition. And they approved the nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. At that time, they approved a National Historic District. So, the, all the forms and the properties in the center of town were nominated and approved for nomination of the to be on the National Register. And the entire group of buildings formed a National Historic District. In the entire country, there are only a hundred or so National Historic Districts. So, it's, Lunenburg's a very special place to have this. Through the wisdom and hard work of the members of the Historical Commission at that time, many who were generational residents, I had the privilege to work with and learn from a lot of these members. A lot of them had been in town for three, four generations. So, they had a lot of interest in preserving the town. That's why they created the Historic District. The village bylaw changed the zoning for the Historic District from residential to commercial, jeopardizing the contributing properties. The Architectural Preservation District, which overlays the National Historic District, was created to protect the district from unbridled development. The Architectural Preservation District Commission was established to oversee the Architectural Preservation District. Previously, the National Historic District was under the jurisdiction of the Lunenburg Historical Commission, which is charged with overseeing the town's historic assets. And now, we have two commissions doing the same thing with different parts of town. The warrant simply creates one commission to do the same work both commissions are doing now. Now, there are eight people doing the work on two commissions. With one commission, there will be five, possibly seven people. Instead of two agendas and minutes, there'll be one. The single commission will have a full commission with all members seated. We won't have the problem with not being able to have a quorum, which severely has affected the work of the, of the Historic Commission over time. Neither has the Architectural Preservation District Commission had a full commission since its inception in two thousand eighteen. There's always been probably four out of five, but we've never had a full commission. If both commissions are fully funded, as they should be in any given year, by merging the Historic Commission and APDC, one budget will be eliminated with savings to the town. And this warrant simply changes the duties of the APDC to the Historic Commission, does nothing else. Everything else stays the same. The bylaw stays the same. The APD bylaw has no changes to it. Historical Commission, APDC, with all highly experienced and knowledgeable commission, is voting unanimously for the merger. And the any questions?
Voting unanimously in, maybe at prior meetings, because last night
Well, we voted
Right.
Last night was for the warrant. Previously, we voted to go ahead with the merger.
Right, okay.
And then, we spoke to town council to legitimize it.
Sure. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions?
So, I'd be curious if at your meetings, you had any public comment similar to what we saw tonight? As a select board, we've seen even more, even emails, probably five to ten times as many as we saw a public comment tonight. Have you seen that at your meetings? And also, how would you address that? Citizens' concerns?
What do you mean citizen, about citizens' concerns?
Concerns about the merger.
There, there's, it's a pretty simple thing. We're changing the APDC to the Historical Commission. Everything else stays the same. It's just creating one commission instead of having two.
Thank you.
That's it. And we had no members, no, the public attended the, the meetings, as far as I recall.
Now, how would you address people's concerns that may, you know, may not even have had the opportunity to read it? But even if they did have the opportunity to read it, if they felt as though it was not simple or were concerned that it was not simple, how would they get those uncertainties addressed?
Well, they could take the warrant and overlap it with the present APD bylaw and notice that it's the same thing. And that the difference is that the, the difference is it says Historical Commission instead of Architectural Preservation District Commission.
And that is how I understood.
And it changes also the language. Architecture changes to historic. So, I, instead of protecting architectural, we're protecting historic.
Now, I can speak from experience because I've, I've followed the, the process organically and thought it made sense because of that very simple, like just changing, you know, titles. But as I read it, I, I was concerned and it was confusing. So, I, I didn't feel, and I had the advantage of actually having to, to read through the document. And what I did think sounded in concept as a, a simple and straightforward process, as I read it, I, I was like, hmm. It does not appear simple and straightforward to me.
But that's the way it was before.
Well, there's deletions, there are additions. And, you know, back to the, the simplicity of replacing APDC with Historical Society is a very, a commission is a simple, is a simple concept to, to wrap my head around, but it's more than that.
Yeah.
And what that means, I don't know. And that's why I'm in favor of spending more time reviewing this issue and having those residents that have a vested interest, vested concerns, the opportunity to be convinced that it is in fact, simple and straightforward.
What specifically was confusing to you?
Well, I mean, I, I could, I could get my, my notes out, but at this point, I'll, I'll just end, end my questioning and turn it over to whoever, whoever else.
Okay.
So, there were three questions that I had submitted to town council about the wording. Like Mr. McLeod said, I think this started as something very simple in intent of just merging bodies, to, to combine two bodies. One was having a trouble, having trouble getting quorum and to have efficiency. And I see, you know, overlap, right? In historical preservation, architecture, the whole umbrella. But there were, I don't know when we're gonna ask town council to weigh in on these. Because in my mind, there are three questions that depending on those answers is really gonna determine how I make up my mind. Should I say the three?
So, we do have Attorney Costa here on Zoom. Are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening. So, Ms. Emke, if you'd like, you can ask him now if you want.
So, perhaps the biggest one is, as Mr. McLeod alluded to, that there are two changes in the proposed article that cross out architectural or architecturally and replace with historical or historically. One is in section one thirteen dash one, and the other one is in actually the definition of the APD. So, one thirteen dash one, point number, number one, A1. And then, after that, the APD definition crosses out architectural. It has, it says an area of historic and/or architectural. The and/or architectural is removed. So, I don't know if there's impact with those changes. Does that change the residents of what they can do, what's allowed, the process? Any change, any impact to the residents in the APD by changing those words?
So, the, the answer is, it's possible. And so, let me, let me provide a bit of additional context that might be helpful to board members. I appreciate the summary that's already been provided tonight and the understanding, I think, that some members had that was explained by the Chairman of the Historical Commission, that the chief objective in making these adjustments to the APD bylaw was to address issues of quorum that were arising with respect to both the APDC and the Historical Commission. That too was my understanding, dating back about a year, when I had maybe the first discussions about a potential, I think the term that was used at the time was a potential merger back in September or October of two thousand twenty-four. And those discussions were with the APDC, the APDC chairman. I immediately, at that time, had expressed some concern that it may not be quite as simple as a quote-unquote merger. And the source of that concern, and I promise I'll bring this back around to your question, but the source of that concern was that Historical Commissions are statutory bodies. They're created, in the case of Lunenburg, they're referenced in your town charter. There's only a couple of, a couple of sections of your bylaw that provide any detail concerning what the Historical Commission does or what its, what its membership might be. That's in Article Four of your, your general bylaws. But Historical Commissions are authorized by statute, by Chapter Forty, Section Eight D. And that statute gets specific, more specific even than your bylaws and your charter, concerning what authority a Historical Commission has. And as you might imagine, that authority is generally related to historic or related attributes of the community. The authority of a Historical Commission under the state statute is not focused necessarily on architecture alone, outside of historic architecture. Because again, the focus is on historic attributes of the community. And so, what I attempted to do, and to the extent that there is going to be criticism of the changes that were made or concern regarding the changes that are made, I'll take full responsibility. What you're looking at in this proposed article is my handiwork. I was asked to, to make an attempt to review the existing APD bylaw and to make appropriate adjustments so that the Historical Commission would in effect administer that bylaw. And in doing that, I attempted to minimize the number of changes I was making and to keep it as simple as many of you have said you'd like it to be, replacing references, for example, to the Architectural Preservation District Commission with references to the Historical Commission. But I also had to be mindful that I didn't want to do anything that could potentially, number one, compromise other authority that the Historical Commission has as a matter of state law. Or number two, raise a red flag when the bylaw or the bylaw revisions are sent to the Attorney General's office for the Attorney General to review them. I didn't want the Attorney General to say, how can it possibly be that a statutory Historical Commission is being given authority to administer an Architectural Preservation District, looking at matters that are beyond the traditional or typical purview of a Historical Commission? And so, with that in the back of my mind, when I looked at section one thirteen dash one, subsection A1, which is one of the purposes of the creation of this Architectural Preservation District. And when I looked at the definition of the Architectural Preservation District in section one thirteen dash two, and in fact, I'll add a third, when I looked at the definition of minor alteration, also in section one thirteen dash two, and I saw references to architectural significance or architectural, or architecturally significant buildings and characteristics, I had some concerns that this might be beyond the purview of a Historical Commission. So, in an effort to not raise that red flag, so to speak, for the Attorney General or any other person that might be reviewing this bylaw and saying, can we give the Historical Commission the sort of authority that we're now vesting in that body? I struck the language and/or architecturally from section one thirteen dash one. And I struck the reference to and/or architectural in the definition of the APD in section one thirteen dash two. And I added a reference to historic character versus simply character of a property in the definition of minor alteration. I didn't change ultimately, as we dig deeper or get further along in the bylaw, the extent to which the Historical Commission is administering the APD bylaw, the regulations or guidelines that they are relying upon administering the bylaw. I didn't make alterations there. But I did try and avoid these references to architectural attributes where I felt that really, the authority of a Historical Commission is over historic attributes.
So, it's clear as mud? Is what I'm it's, it's unclear if this will have a significant impact on residents in the APD compared to what they can do today?
So, I think the intent, I think the intent is that it shouldn't. Because we've not, when we get, we're talking about a purpose clause, we're talking about definitions. But when you get deeper into the document and you talk about the powers and duties of the administering agency, whatever it might be, the APDC or the Historical Commission, when you talk about the sorts of uses that are exempt or sorts of features that are exempt from the bylaw, when you talk about the process of determining applicability or conducting administrative review, there's no change, no substantive changes to those sections. But I do suppose, to answer your question directly, that somebody could look back at the purpose clause and say, well, there was an informed decision to remove the word architecturally from the purposes. And so, in the process of administering this bylaw, the Historical Commission really shouldn't be looking at architectural features. I suppose we could add it back in, but I do have that concern about it operating effectively as a red flag for the Attorney General.
Okay. So, we can add it in, but the AG may not approve it?
Correct.
I know the intent is to not change anything. That is the intent, I believe, of both commissions, that the regulations, everything residents experience today would be the same under this proposed article. I'm not sure. I think the question is, does the article, does the written word match that and back that up? And I think that is, we don't know, I think. We can't say for sure. So, can I follow up on the appeal process? Since we're talking about processes and how it may change under the proposed article. Can you confirm the current appeal process under the APD bylaw? And what, if any, change there would be to that appeal process under the proposed article?
Sure. So, the appeal procedure is described in section one thirteen dash thirteen of the bylaw. The provisions, as they read today, state that any aggrieved party can appeal the action of the APDC in accordance with Massachusetts general laws. That's a very vague statement, but it's a statement that I see often in general bylaws that are not governed by any sort of a statutory framework that specifies a particular route of appeal. There'll be a generic statement that the appeals are done in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, which typically means it's what we refer to as a certiorari appeal or potentially a thirty A appeal that gets filed in most often Superior Court and is a review that is restricted to the record of the administrative body that made the determination that is being challenged. Nothing, nothing is changing in section one thirteen dash thirteen, except the only two changes that are proposed as, as part of this warrant article would be replacing in two instances, the references to the APDC with references to the Historical Commission. The first time is in that introductory sentence that reads as I just described, stating that an aggrieved party can appeal in accordance with general laws. And then, the second reference is something that was added, you might recall, some of you more recently, to the bylaw that provided for an alternative with respect to buildings or properties owned by the town of Lunenburg, where the select board on behalf of the town, if it's agreed by the Historical Commission's denial, previously the APDC's denial, but if we make this change, the Historical Commission's denial of a certificate to alter, has the opportunity to bring that matter forward to town meeting to override the determination of the administering agency, the APDC or the Historical Commission.
Okay. So, the general laws that are governing the appeal process that we would refer to, are they different general, are, is it different part of the Mass general law in the, the current bylaw as, exists today? Versus if this article would go forward? Because, you know, I'm hearing you have to go to Superior Court if this passes. Do they, do we have, would a, an individual have to go to Superior Court today?
Yes. There's no, there's no change to the appellate process. We've simply changed the references to APDC and replaced them with references to the Historical Commission.
Okay. So, there is, so just to clear that up, because I think there's a lot of information out there that now, if this article were to pass, it's this onerous appeal process that doesn't exist today, but in fact, it is the same appeal process?
Yes. There's been no modification. I made no changes to section thirteen.
I, I know, but I didn't know if that triggered, okay. Instead of following this part of Mass general law, you're now following this part. Last, last question was regarding the requirements requirements for membership. That was that whole section that was deleted, 113-4. So the APDC today has, you know, requirements or ideal, I don't know how rigid, I mean, they do actually have members that meet these requirements today, but I don't know if they would always be able to do that. Having, you know, a resident of APD, having a craftsman, that whole section is now removed in this proposed article. Is it possible to add that back to this historical commission if they were merged? Or are we unable to put any kind of aspirational requirements on membership for this commission, this now merged commission?
So the, the reason that those provisions were deleted, of course, is because we no longer will have an APD, will have the historical commission performing the functions of the APD. And the historical commission already exists. It exists both as a matter of statute and consistent with your bylaws and your charter. Your bylaws with respect to membership in the historical commission simply say that the historical commission shall be comprised of five members appointed by the select board for terms of three years, each with terms staggered so that nearly an equal number of members shall be appointed each year. So that's the, that's the language of your bylaw. That's generally consistent with the language of the statute, which is actually less specific, and simply says that the commission shall consist of not less than three and or more than seven members. To your question, you know, do you have the ability to now dictate more specific qualifications for members of the historical commission? I'm not aware of anything that would prevent you from doing so, but you would need to not just make the modifications here, you would need to make the modifications for clarity in the section of your general bylaws that deals with the historical commission. Because currently, somebody referencing Article four is simply going to say, it's five members appointed by the select board for three-year terms.
Okay. So we could, I was concerned that because historical commission is statutory, that there may be something limiting us to, to impose some kind of membership requirements. But you're saying, no, we can do that, but not only would this article have to be changes by law, but also the historical commission by law?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just gonna let the, I'm gonna let the town manager jump in here for a question, because I think she wanted to follow.
I'm chomping at the bit with a follow-up question, Attorney Costa. So we, are you, I'm sure you're not familiar, well, maybe you are. I was gonna say, I'm sure you're not familiar with a historic, a bylaw changing, a historic commission's composition, and how the Attorney General would treat that. But do you have any experience of another or, or a historical commission, but a statutory body where a town has put forth more criteria than the statute provides? And what the Attorney General, the Attorney General's treatment of the same?
So, so I, I don't. Generally speaking, when the statute provides a mechanism for composition of a public body, and doesn't get more specific as to qualifications for individual members, that, that's a floor and not a ceiling. And to the extent that municipality wished to get more specific, so long as it's not in direct conflict with the statute, in my mind, that's not, that's not troubling. But, you know, have I consulted with the Attorney General about that issue? No. Have I, have I extensively researched that issue to see if in contexts other than APDCs or historical commissions, the Attorney General has been willing to approve those more onerous or more specific qualification requirements? I haven't. But I, I think that you're, you're also maybe touching upon something that, to go back to concerns that I had as I reviewed the APD bylaw and attempted to make adjustments to it. You know, I've said from the outset that it is somewhat unusual to take a, a statutory public body like a historical commission with a charge that is statutory, and give it authority pursuant to a bylaw that is effectively being adopted pursuant to home rule. I'm not saying it's impermissible to do that, but I've offered warnings sort of throughout these discussions that I've had. And I know that I've had discussions to this effect with, with, with you, Madam Town Manager, about just the reality that, you know, I cannot guarantee that when this gets submitted to the Attorney General's office, that the Attorney General's office doesn't say, even, even if you were to revert back to the, the language that refers to only historically significant buildings and not historically and architecturally significant buildings. And even if you strike those references to architectural, I still can't be certain that the Attorney General doesn't look at this and say, you're giving the historical commission authority that is sort of beyond what the statute contemplates. If you want to create by way of home rule, you know, an architectural preservation district, then do so the way you've done it before, and the way we've approved it before, with a commission that administers it. But we're not going to let you designate a statutory body to administer that bylaw. There's a real possibility of that occurring.
All right. Any other questions for Attorney Costa?
No, I just want to thank you, Attorney Costa, for, for, it's, I know I sent one question early this morning, so thank you for getting the answers.
Yeah. So we're going to bring up Mr. Skonbrini. Mr., Attorney Costa, if you want to just hang out over there, just in case there are any other questions on this warrant article. And then after this, we'll bring you back, Attorney Costa, to talk through the rest of the warrant, if there are any other questions. Okay?
Okay. Anthony Skonbrini, I live in a five- valley road.
We know who you are.
All right. And.
Well, I, I got some questions to start off. So can you talk about the background of where this came from? How did you come up with this idea for a merger, and why is it necessary from the APDC's perspective?
Well, Richard has been concerned, and he has publicly stated he's concerned about quorum. I'm concerned about efficiencies. And, and Richard said that tonight as well. But his emphasis has been more on the lack of quorum than it has been on this concept of, we got lots of committees and lots of commissions and lots of boards in Lunenburg. A lot of them are unstaffed. We had one that kind of disappeared, personnel committee. And it still remains, in a disappeared state. Maybe someday we'll get rid of that committee. And I didn't want to see the historic commission disappear, because I know that Richard has had quorum issues. We have not, mainly because, you know, I've been, I'm retired. I can, I can encourage people to attend. I can make it easier for people to attend. And I was trying to bring together people of like-minded interests, you know, people who are interested in historic preservation, to look at not just the architectural preservation district, but also the town's historic assets as well. So, you know, so that was the reason why we looked, we started this conversation. And, and I gotta say that, we started this conversation in our public meetings. And, you know, we never had any real offline conversations, you know, maybe only to set an agenda item, but we don't converse, we don't converse about what we want to do in any place other than a public meeting. And we brought this issue before the select board. Now, two of you weren't here when that happened. You weren't here, Brian, and you weren't here, Glenn. But Renee was, and Amanda was, and Caesar, you were. And we said, well, this is the reason why we want to merge. And, and that hasn't changed since the October of last year. You know, and we were very, we were very open, and we were very, you know, publicly minded in terms of trying to make sure that, you know, this, this would happen, that the town would embrace this. I don't want to bring a warrant to a town meeting and not have it pass. That's a waste of time. I also don't want to have, you know, two groups that are doing the same kind of work, essentially, do that inefficiently. And I thought this makes more sense for us to have one body that's doing historic preservation in the town of Lunenburg with the focal point on the architectural preservation district. And, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted Adam to stay online, because I want to talk about the difference between what this bylaw means architecturally versus historically, because I think that's been grossly, grossly misstated by the people who are opposing this, this warrant going onto the special town meeting.
Okay, we'll get into that. Some more questions?
All right.
So I know you've reviewed the draft. Do you believe that Town Council's drafted warrant article accurately accomplishes the merger in the way that you intended?
I do based on his comments to us during a conference call that was held, I think, on the 6th of October.
That sounds right.
Yeah. Was it, was it the 6th?
That sounds approximately right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I, yes. I think that it will.
Okay.
I might have another comment, but I'm gonna tie that in.
Yeah, that's fine. Has the rest of the commission reviewed the language of the warrant article?
They should have, because I sent it to them, and then we had a meeting to talk about it last night.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure they all did.
Okay. So the vote last night for the APDC, I believe, was three to one?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you just summarize how that discussion went, what some of the points were?
I was shocked that we didn't have a unanimous vote on it. But maybe I shouldn't have been shocked. The reason why I was shocked is because we've had one of our members, you know, bigot in favor of this. He wants to extend, that same member, who is now opposed to the historic commission, taking on the work of the APDC. He wants to extend the APDC to a wider, the APD to a wider area. And personally, if you want to talk about onerous things happening to town official, or town citizens, I don't want to see that happen. But that's what his position has been. You know, and if you go back and look at our publicly recorded meetings, you will hear him say, well, I want them to extend it down to where the old funeral home will be, which I absolutely positively disagree because it's a classic case of spot zoning. And it would now mean that every single person who wants to do something that's in a house that's more than 75 years old, down Mass Avenue, now has to fill out some paperwork. So I was really surprised by that three to one vote last night. Okay?
So this question relates to, I think, what a lot of people are touching on. There's a difference between architectural preservation and historical preservation. Where do you draw the line? And do you intend for this merger to move that line in a certain direction?
Architectural preservation is a very subjective term. Historic preservation is a very objective term, because you put a date associated with that in this bylaw, and it's 75 years old. And you can have an architectural feature, and if it's not on a building that's 75 years old, you're not going to deal with it. And, and this is the question that I want to ask Mr. Costa. Adam, can I have him over here? It'd be easier for me.
Don't worry, he'll catch up. Go ahead, ask a question.
All right. Adam, do you see the, the changes with regards to this bylaw now being administered by the historic commission, do you see it as being more onerous or less onerous for the residents who live within the APD?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, my, my objective, and I, I thought it was, I thought it was my directive, was to really not delve into the substance, but rather to replace effectively references to the APD or the APDC with references to the historical commission. So I think the answer to your question was, my intention was not to make it more or less onerous, but to make it the equivalent degree of, of requirements, standards, being administered by the historical commission, as is today being administered by the Architectural Preservation District Commission. I'm, I'm recognizing, and not for the first time tonight, because I've had a couple of conversations with the town manager prior to tonight's meeting, and I'm not sure that she and I, and, and you, Tony, even realized this back on, whenever you said it was October 6th, when we had the discussion, and you reviewed my adjustments to the warrant article. You know, my intention was not to open up a can of worms, so to speak, with respect to striking the reference to "architecturally" in the purpose clause, or striking that reference within the definition of the APD. Again, the objective there was simply to align the language of the bylaw with the sorts of purposes that are typically fulfilled by a historical commission. Those could, those, those changes can certainly be undone. Those, those words can be kept in the bylaw as they are today, if that is what is giving rise to questions like this about, is this going to be more or less onerous? Because we haven't changed the, the, the standards, we haven't changed the parameters, the geographic location, anything with respect to the APD. I've made no adjustments to any of that in, in connection with these, these changes.
So no more or no less onerous?
Well, hold on, I just, I just want to emphasize that, because I think that's maybe getting lost a little bit here. No changes of substance were made to the actual, actual architectural preservation district bylaw. There's no new regulations, there's no new processes, nothing like that.
Except membership.
Except, yeah, Sharon and I have a question about that. We'll get into that. That, yes, it changes. But nothing in substance about the actual regulations is changing. What's changing is who's enforcing it. So instead of having an APDC, an Architectural Preservation District Commission that enforces it, is going to be given to the historical commission to enforce instead. Because, this is how I understand it, because of the statutory requirements of historical commissions, Attorney Costa's goal in achieving this warrant article was to get rid of the term "architectural" and replace it with "historic," so that it wouldn't be kicked back by the Attorney General's office, with the assumption and the intent that the historical commission would enforce the architectural preservation bylaw as it's intended to be enforced, not historically, but architecturally. So that's how I see that. And it sort of, it gets into this question again, what's the difference between architectural preservation and historical preservation? Because I'll say that I think a lot of the concern that I'm hearing from residents of the district is that the APDC already goes too far with some of their enforcement. So I think the real concern here is that if the historical commission is enforcing it instead, it's going to be even worse.
What, what, for what reason would you make that comment?
I'm telling you, this is the feedback that I'm getting.
That, that is, that is insane, because the bylaw governs what these individuals can do. And I gotta tell you, you know, you have a historic commission that's looking at all the time, you know? And what kind of issues has that historic commission created for the town of Lunenburg? How many times has the, has a resident had to go to court? Now, they would have to go to Superior Court. How many times does that happen? Does anybody on this board know the answer to that question?
That's such an onerous appeal process.
But has that ever happened?
So it might, but I'm not an attorney. But rules, laws, bylaws only matter insofar as they are enforced or appealed. So if someone receives a decision that maybe is more historic in nature, is too far, but they receive it and they have to say, am I gonna pay for an attorney to go to court? Maybe they won't because of that. So I don't actually think that's a good litmus test.
But, but we just heard Attorney Costa say, they have to go to Superior Court today if they go to the APDC.
Right.
And appeal to the APDC decision. So that, that is a net neutral. That does not change.
Is that what he said? They'd have to go to the Superior Court?
I'll leave it to Attorney Costa to say it again. That's what I heard.
Yeah. So, so, so the reference here, I gave Superior Court as an example. The reference, the, the first sentence of Section 13 currently reads, "Any aggrieved party may appeal the action of the APDC in accordance with the general laws." And the proposed amendment would read, "Any aggrieved party may appeal the action of the historical commission in accordance with the general laws." So the only change between those two sentences is the replacement of the reference to the APDC with the historical commission. There's still a reference to appeals being in accordance with the general laws. And when it comes to the actions of an adjudicatory body, taking action in accordance with a, a bylaw, a local general bylaw that has been adopted by a municipality consistent with its home rule authority, those appeals are either certiorari appeals under Chapter 249 of the general laws, or administrative agency appeals under Chapter 30A of the general laws. Most of those find their way to Superior Court. I would say, I, I litigate a fair number of those cases, and I would say 90% of them I litigate in Superior Court. There's an occasional one that might find its way into the land court, depending upon the agency and whether that court has jurisdiction. Occasionally, one might be filed in district court, although that's rare. Same thing with housing court. So generally speaking, these cases, the appeal procedure for bylaws of this sort end up in Superior Court. And that is no different under the new version of the bylaw that's being proposed, as it is under the existing version.
So the appeal process is the same today?
Yeah.
And, and this actually came up in 2015, when Rebecca Lantry was presenting to the select board with the original bylaw. They, Tom Alonso asked, what was, what's the appeal, how do you grieve? How did someone appeal this? And they mentioned, they said at that time, Superior Court.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify something through to Attorney Costa? You're talking about like a certiorari petition or a 30A petition. Practical reality for, for those people that might be listening, they're hearing Superior Court, and they're thinking perhaps like a, a case that takes many months to travel through Superior Court. Can you talk about the process for a Can you talk about the process for a records review at Superior Court? And what that, how that might be different or similar to a case in Superior Court?
Sure. No, that's a, that's a fair question through you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, this concept of an appeal is not unusual in the world of municipal government. So if you require a special permit, or a variance, or you disagree with a determination made by the building commissioner with respect to use of your property, or a proposed addition to your property, or some other issue of bylaw compliance. If you seek and obtain an order of conditions, and you're dissatisfied with the conditions you receive from the Conservation Commission, or the Board of Health takes action, there's an appellate process for all of these things. And that appellate process is either, in the case of zoning matters, there's a zoning act that governs the process and directs you to typically Superior Court or the land court. And in the case of other types of bylaws that are more general in nature and not zoning, like the wetlands bylaw that would be administered by the Conservation Commission, or a local septic or sewer bylaw that might be administered by a Board of Health or a sewer commission, those appeals are what the town managers just referred to as more generic appeals that are record reviews. And the way that those differ from a zoning appeal, a zoning appeal can take some time. A zoning appeal can take anywhere from six months to two years or more, depending upon the complexity of the case and the court that you're in, and many factors that are not necessarily within your control. That's because when the court reviews a decision made by a ZBA or a planning board on a zoning matter, the court is giving it a fresh look. The court allows the litigants to present all their evidence again, typically conducts a trial if the case gets that far, hears from witnesses, evaluates the credibility of those witnesses, and then makes a decision based upon all the facts that are before him or her. With respect to sursurory appeals, or 38 appeals, which you've heard me reference in the context of this APD bylaw, and which also would apply to Conservation Commission appeals or Board of Health appeals, those are reviews on the record. And so what that means is, once the APDC makes a determination today and issues that determination, if there is a party that is aggrieved by that determination and wishes to challenge it, they would file that challenge in Superior Court. And rather than the court conducting a fresh review of the evidence, and eventually ending up at a trial where witnesses are presented, evidence is reviewed, and the judge takes the matter under advisement, rather than that, the administrative record, whatever happened to be before the APDC, or if these changes are made, the Historical Commission, gets compiled and submitted to the court. And then the parties exchange written motions arguing why the case should or shouldn't be won by one party or the other, and the court decides the case on those written motions. So it's a more expedited review by the court that isn't going to take, in most instances, the 18 months, two years or more that a zoning appeal might take, even in the most complex cases because of this review process. It's a fairly expedited timeframe. Now, you know, it's expedited in the context of litigation in Massachusetts courts. So you do have to take that with a bit of a grain of salt. But it is much faster than other types of more traditional litigation.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. You have a follow-up question?
No.
Okay, all right, two more questions, and then I'm going to let other members ask questions, too. So the bylaw of the APDC, we already touched on this composition. It requires a member to be a design professional. It requires a member to be a resident of the district itself. We're getting rid of that. Do you think that's an issue?
No.
Okay. Do you think it's important for a resident of the district to?
You have, you have a number of committees and commissions and boards in this town. And you have the right people show up. And you have, and the number one ingredient for the right person to show up is that they're willing to get engaged in this process, you know? That's the number one criteria for a volunteer.
Sure, Mr. McGrath, if you want to jump in.
You also have the, you also have the power to appoint, so you can consider that when you're appointing members to the commission.
Right. I mean, Caesar, the people, the people that are interested in Historic Preservation, that's the group that's going to show up, regardless of whether there's a formal requirement or not. And, you know, we've, we've tried to recruit members. You know, I've gone out to people and said, you know, would you like to be on Historic Preservation Commission? And it is, I think, a fairly narrow area of interest, even though everybody enjoys the historic structures of New England. I mean, it's a defining part of what this part of the country is all about. But I think that, you know, as Richard said, if you have somebody that is making the wrong kind of recommendations, they have a term end, you know? And that's when you go out and you recruit somebody else to, you know, to fulfill that duty. I mean, I think that, and, and when I first joined the APDC, I wasn't sure. And no one said to me, you know, like, you're going to fit this slot. I mean, we weren't paying attention to that, because it's hard to find people that want to do this. But I think that the criteria for qualifications, you know, that was, like, when I saw the changes that Costa had done, I was like, that's okay, you know, we'll figure out, we'll get the right people to the table.
All right, fair enough. All right, one more. We've heard from residents who have shared the sentiment that proper engagement with the public to solicit feedback on the merger didn't happen. How do you respond to that?
This is really, can I talk now?
I just asked you a question, of course.
All right. That's, I am offended by some of the things that have been said in public. And in fact, I saw a post on the Republican page, whatever, I don't know how it was today, and it said that I'm pushing this. And I actually contacted the person who posted it, Kathy Clark. And I said, Kathy, I says, I'm going to send you the meeting minutes where we, as a group, unanimously voted to explore merging the commission. I'm not pushing this, you know? And, and I, I take offense to people saying that I'm deceitful, okay? I think that that's, that's the kind of stuff that makes people not want to get engaged in volunteer organizations. Because I came to, Richard and I came to, I spent another Tuesday night back in October, you know, instead of being with my family, before you all, engaging you and the town, you know, to say, we're considering a merger. And then this was on our agenda, our public agenda, every single meeting that we had. It was actually on the agenda before we came to town, before we came, before the Select Board. You know, so this notion that we haven't engaged the residents, it's the residents' fault. It's not our fault. I can't make them come to the meeting. And the idea that we would have a public hearing while that was suggested last night, maybe that would increase attendance? Our public hearings don't have any more attendance than our regular meetings do. Now, I want to address one comment that was made by one of the proponents for not moving this warrant forward. At 1010 Massachusetts Avenue, we were notified by the building commissioner, not the property owner, as required by town law or their representative, that they were building a porch. So it was the building commissioner who stopped her work, not the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And once the building commissioner said, hey, they need to send you the paperwork, we responded almost immediately with approval. So, you know, that's another example of, it's, you know, we have responsibilities as commission members. You have responsibilities as Select Board members. The residents of this town have a responsibility to understand what the rules and regulations are for living in the town of Lunenburg. We weren't trying to pull, push this forward in some clandestine format. And, you know, I think this is, this is absolutely at the, at the heart of the issue of why you have a difficult time trying to recruit volunteers. I told Kathy Clark in a text that I sent to her today, I says, take that post down because it intimidates people who we need to have come forward and be a part of these commissions. I says, but be aware, Kathy, I will not be intimidated. I'm not leaving the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And if we make this merger, I'm not leaving the Historic Commission.
All right, I'm going to open it up to questions from the board now.
So you had mentioned the dissenting vote, member of the APDC. Was he against the bylaw, or was he more concerned with the timing and the lack of input from the?
I sense, I sense he was concerned about the timing. And, but once again, this is a question I have for Adam. Adam, how do you get the Attorney General to review a proposal from a town without going to a town meeting vote and sending them the warrant, an approved warrant? How do you do that?
You can't.
There you go. So we have to put this, we have to have a warrant for them to review. You know, yes, it's true, the Attorney General may come back and say, you can't have a merged commission. But the only way we're going to get the Attorney General to tell us is?
Is to pass it and see what happens.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and, you know, that's the thing that, you know, like, this is a process piece. It's like, and once again, I heard a comment last night where town meeting isn't a forum for this type of a conversation. Town meeting is the ultimate forum for these types of conversations. Now, no one should, no board committee or commission should bring before the town an item that hasn't been properly vetted. You know, where we've had public meetings, we've had public discussion, we've had attorney advice provided. Now, I'm not going to bring this up, maybe, but we've been waiting, you know, we've been waiting for this advice for a long time. And Adam, I mean, I am going to ask you a question. Adam, did I ask you at ATM if you were going to be working on this bylaw?
At the annual town meeting?
Yep. Out in the hallway?
Probably. I honestly don't recall, but probably. We've been discussing the bylaw in some form or fashion for a while.
Adam, did I send you some emails, which copies went to the, to the town manager?
Mr. Skolbrun, I'm just, we get it. This has been on the radar for a long time and has been troubled with all sorts of different priorities. We don't need to go there.
Okay, so, all right, so anybody else have any questions?
So is there any urgency to the changes you're seeking in this bylaw?
I do not like doing stuff and not getting things done. Is there any urgency? Heck, no, you know? But I don't want my time wasted. That's one of the criteria that I have for me being a volunteer, Glenn, is I don't, I mean, if I was standing here saying that, oh, we talked, we voted on this last night and we want you to put this on the town warrant, that's inappropriate. Absolutely inappropriate. But that's not what we did.
That's exactly what we did.
So the, you know, speaking to your, the process being frustrating for volunteers, one of my specific concerns, mostly this whole thing is with process. And it speaks directly to the point you made of the effect it has on volunteers. And it carries over to those who attend town meeting. We always seek to try to get as many people to participate in town meeting as possible. One of the primary concerns, or maybe even the primary concern that I have with moving this forward at the special town meeting, not only do I think special town meetings are for a lighter lift, but I am concerned that the effect that it has on the voters. If you bring a, an article, like an emotional article like this, where it literally is the government reaching in and taking control over property rights, is my concern is that the divisiveness that could come on town meeting floor is the very reason why a lot of people may not attend town meeting. So, you know, I have the same concern that you have with the effect on committees as that it, you know, that this will have on town meeting floor. Because it is, like I said, the process is flawed. And it's, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. I'm just, as I think your dissenting member had said, I'm, I'm in favor of more time. The voters have reached out, several voters have reached out, and I think articulated legitimate concerns. So I guess I'd like to hear you just speak to the why you can't wait six months or so for the annual town meeting, now that we have people's attention.
First of all, I think it's, it's actually, when you look at the real meaning of life, what the Architectural Preservation District Commission does in the town of Lunenburg, it's like that, okay? And in terms of process, it's certainly more than that. And I think that, you know, what we're doing here is a gross waste of time if we don't move this forward. The other thing is, Glenn, you know, we wanted to put this on special town meeting last year. And we got told, oh, no, there's not been enough discussion about this. And then when Jennifer arrived, she says, I'm going to try and tee it up for town meeting and annual town meeting.
And I specifically, I just want to jump in here so there's no confusion. I requested that Mr. Skolbrun, based on where the article was, that he agreed with me that we withdraw it from the annual to allow some more time.
Right. You know, so, you know, keep wasting my time, and I may be intimidated.
Well, I guess my concern would be that bringing it forward now would be a colossal waste of your time, and that it would be.
I don't, I don't think so. I think, Glenn, I think, I think I can make the case for the voters to show up, because I will bring truth to that conversation. You know, they'll see me and they'll know that I am not pushing something here. The other thing is that if you choose not to move this forward, I'll live with that, okay? That's, you know, that's why we have elected bodies. And I think we've done that. We know, we've followed, we've followed that process since we first met with the Select Board in October. And I think that, you know, bringing, like, Richard's been in this business, what, 25? 25 years, Richard? It's time for him to have a break. He has a break, guess what happens? You don't have a Historic Commission in this town. You, this, we will go down that same, this goes back to your urgency question, Glenn. We will go down that same path that the Personnel Committee has gone down to, you know, where they just disappeared. And that's not how to run town government, which is your responsibility, not ours, not the commission. So I do think that, you know, that we need to take this process. It'll give us the answer. I mean, Nathan hasn't said he's opposed to a merger, okay? I'm not sure, you know, we didn't ask Anna to vote last night, so I'm not sure what her position is. But this is the way for the process to get an answer. If we wait another, if we wait another six months and go to the annual town meeting, we still have to go to the Attorney General and have him say yes or no. You know, it's just, it just baffles me that this became such a controversy. It really, it really does.
All right.
It's alternate universe controversy, by the way.
Mr. Leighton.
I have no questions, but I do want to thank you for coming tonight to speak to the article. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, here we go again.
Okay.
Um, Attorney Costa, can I ask you, is the proposed article, does that have any zoning change whatsoever? Is there any implications to zoning whatsoever?
No, the APD bylaw was never, and is not today, a zoning bylaw. That's important because there is a distinction between zoning and general bylaws, and there are different procedural requirements and different quantum of vote required for adoption. So it never has been a zoning bylaw, it is not today a zoning bylaw, and nothing that is proposed to change about it would make it a zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that out there for the public, because I think a lot of the churn has been because the public is hearing, we're, it's, we're going to be rezoned as historical, and we're going to have a new appeal process, and there's going to be all these extra layers, and it's going to be onerous, and it's going to cost money, and it's just, right? Everything I've, and this is why I am so happy that Attorney Costa could join, because I, he is a source of truth for me when it comes to, you know, what is the letter of the law? What is this actually saying? I think a few things have not worked in anyone's favor when it comes to this article. One, this is your third attempt to get it on a warrant. I mean, it never was drafted before. I know Carter drafted something in February before he left. I never saw it, I don't know.
It was. It was awful.
And I know you've been trying, I spent this, I spent, you don't want to know how many hours. I've watched you, I've seen more of you and you this weekend than I've seen of anyone else this weekend. The, I know you wanted to get it earlier, and it just, with everything in town, it just wasn't a priority. It's not an excuse, it's just a fact. This article was not a priority for Attorney Costa, for, for us to ask Attorney Costa to make it a priority. There were just bigger fish, bigger things we needed to deal with. So that didn't work in your favor. The Select Board got this draft article October 5th, I believe, right, probably the day after. I think it was like midnight, the town manager sent it out to us. And ever since then, I have been digging into it. I had nothing, we had nothing to look at. We knew it was coming, we knew there was talk, and it was created. We knew it was coming, we knew there was talk, and it was creating some angst in the community, but we had nothing before us to review because the intent was, hey, we just want to combine a group of people, and they're going to do the same job. Nothing changes, it's just, it's just instead of two groups doing it, we're now going to have one group. And it'll save the Historical Commission because that's in danger of falling the way of the Personnel Committee and going away. So time has not been on our side, okay, because of that. That's just how it is. That being said, I think there was 2020 hindsight, I think what would have been to your benefit was a communication. And I think I am offended of how much crap, because we're on TV, that the Select Board has taken over this, okay? I think the EPDC could have sent out a letter to the APD residents saying this was coming, could have maybe, I don't know what Carter's draft looked like, but get, get it before the residents of the APD, at least. So that, you had two weeks to do that in the, because of the timing of when we got the draft. I think the process has been followed. The process is, this is, sorry, this is the process. Government is slow, I hate it. I am the most impatient person you will ever meet. Something I'm working on. It's, it's slow, it's messy, that's the process. There is no, I had several conversations with the town manager, like, am I missing something? Is there supposed to be a public hearing? What, I'm not seeing anything in our bylaws? Is this any, no, this is the process. You could have public engagement, information sessions, you know, the Planning Board has done that, leading up to their public hearings even. Parks did information sessions. Are they well attended? Probably not, they weren't, the ones that I saw. So yes, I mean, you say the onus is on the residents, but let's be honest, I mean, before I moved here, I wasn't paying attention where I was living, what was going on in town, really. So, so we have to go make an extra effort to, to communicate to the residents. I agree, town meeting is a place, that is where the decisions are made. That's where the sausage is made, town meeting, right? That's the process. So what I've heard, my concerns coming in tonight were, is there any, what is the substantial change in this article? Because I know the intent, I know the intent, and I think everyone thought it was going to be simple and easy, but then it got complicated because Historical Commission is statutory and you have this APDC, and I think, are we still only the second APDC in state?
That I don't know. No, we were the second to adopt, I'm sure there's more now.
10 years ago, we were the second. Ipswich was the first. So then, as Attorney Costa got into drafting this, you know, and then it got messy, it got complicated, there's no precedent, the Attorney General could reject this whole thing. What I've heard tonight is, the intent is there, nothing should change for the APD. And please, Attorney Costa, step in if I'm misstating anything that I heard. Nothing should change in terms of what APD residents can do, the process for how they do that. They would go to this new merged commission instead of APDC. Nothing changes in the appeal process. What am I forgetting? I think, so the only change that I've heard tonight is the requirement for membership. Is that fair? Does everyone agree? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Attorney Costa, did I, is, is that correct?
And of course, who's enforcing the bylaw, but...
Right, you're just going, instead of going to the APDC, you're going before this merged committee.
All right. Mr. Lockwood, if you want to, you're a member of the APDC, if you'd like to speak here, you can come on up.
I'd like my, my turn to speak.
You've, you'll get your turn, you've spoken a lot, Mr. Lockwood.
He wanted to respond to something I said, I could tell he started.
That's exactly right, I do.
And that's okay. Do you want to come up? Yeah.
I do.
So, hold on, just...
I want to answer her question.
Let Mr. Lockwood respond. He wants to get in, he can, he's a member of the APDC, and then you can respond after that.
All right.
He needs a mic.
Nathan Lockwood, 91 Main Street, APDC member. So, yeah, I think this has been really helpful and enlightening conversation tonight with the attorney, which has helped address some things. That said, I guess it's, so the bylaw, we talk about, has it, has the bylaw changed in its, you know, other than who's there? I guess what I would say with, with bylaw and law in general, like, it's, and I think what we, what you just said, Renee, was no changes except who's, who's interpreting and applying and that sort of thing. And I think two, two things. One is, one is it's important, not just in the abstract, but I think there are concrete reasons and evidence in the past operation of the APDC that would make that a very salient issue in terms of how those, how the APD, the APD has been applied in the past. I think, not to go back to the same example every time, because I know there are other ones as well, but I think the windows on the Ritter Building and the nature of that discussion, and, you know, in some, in many people's minds, I think the Select Board included, what, the way that proceeded really was not consistent with what many people feel. The interpretation applied by the APDC was not in, consistent with how many felt it should be interpreted. And in particular, it was maybe too historically rigid for a bylaw that was supposed to balance concerns of preservation and protection and economy and reasonableness. And I, I mean, it really, I, folks probably close to that project than I was, but my understanding is that it dragged out and maybe even derailed some of the planned, you know, maintenance and upgrades that were, were planned for the Ritter Building. So, I get, so all this to say is that the people do matter, and especially, so there's a, this, currently the APDC does X and the Historical Committee does Y. Now, there is an overlap of interest there, but I don't think, the APDC is not strictly a historical committee. And I love historical preservation and whatnot, I wouldn't necessarily join the Historical Committee because I wouldn't necessarily, in my personal thing, I just wouldn't necessarily, maybe not, maybe in 10 years it'll be different, but want to get into that level of detail with it. And so, our Historical Committee's done amazing things. You heard McGrath say that we're like one of a small, very small number in the country with this type of historical district and whatnot. So I have a lot of respect for the work. I do think the mindset that you bring to that work is, and we need that input into the APDC, but I don't know that you want that being the overriding approach to how the APDC does business. I think the APDC has to make compromises that are, you know, kind of hard to do with that, that passion and that mindset and that mission. And I mean, the thing is, the economic impact on residents in the district in terms of how this is done, one way or the other, you heard a resident showed up today to talk about how, you know, the work on the, on the porch was delayed. Now, all homeowners know what a headache it is to do improvements to their home, I mean, unless they're really good at themselves, and, you know, how happy they are when they are done, but what a headache it is and what a nightmare it is to be stopped with stuff. Now, again, I don't, I'm not blaming the APDC for that. What I would say is, I think that's an example of the APDC in operation, which shows that we have continued work to do to streamline it and make it better for achieving its goal, but in a way that's better for residents as well as the overall big picture. And Anthony's been doing some good things to streamline different parts of the process as well, which I really appreciate. But there is, so not to be long-winded, but I think there's a very, it's not crazy to think that if you take this business, the Historical Committee stuff does a lot of not APDC stuff, and now you're recruiting for that and this APDC stuff, that you're gonna, you're gonna self-select mostly for historical people because that's going to be, be the work. And they're good people, but I don't think you want that. We see the dangers if that mindset takes over the administration of this bylaw. So I think, you know, a little, maybe it would be different if the bylaw was written in a way to have enough guardrails around that, but what I can tell you right now is, whoever is interpreting it and applying it has a lot of discretion, and in fact, there's a huge part, the APDC calls for guidelines that describe how they're going to be interpreted and implied, and that is at the discretion the APDC does require to be approved by the Select Board. But, so, so there's a lot of discretion here, and the, and sort of the culture of the body that's doing it will matter a lot. And I think there's, it's not crazy to think that changing the selection process of the members and giving them additional historical responsibilities could change the culture. And again, what's at stake for people in the district is not small. It's way, in terms of hours, I mean, I really appreciate that Tony's spent a lot of time, and like, he's spent way more time than I have. I wish I, I had spent more, but, you know, he's done, you know, he's really given a lot of himself to this position. But, but compared to the time and money that could potentially cost residents if this is mishandled, is, it's nothing. And in terms of their cost to their, their livelihood and property and whatnot. So I, I just think, you know, I'm not, I was all for exploring this, I'm still glad we, I'm glad we explored it, and I think we can review it down the road, but I think, you know, the residents in districts, the people have said, it's not just the legal code that, in a glance, seems to be the same. The, the people part, both on the interpretation and application side, matter a lot, and I think people's antenna are going up for a reason in the district. So I think, I think, first of all, I really, hats off to the Select Board for all the research, and Renee, like, the paper you put together, you clearly researched the heck out of this. I'm really thankful for how prepared you came to this discussion. I agree with your conclusions, like, we should have a public hearing, which means, which is different than an open meeting, it just, it means, like, we invite the people to come to, especially the ones that are directly impacted, to come discuss it. I don't think that's unreasonable, and I appreciate the time you put in, Tony, but, you know, there's time between now and May, and I just, I don't, there is no reason to rush, if the only, there's no real reason to rush this at this point. We'd all like things to be more efficient, be able to do things quicker, I sure, sure would, but that's not a reason to rush decisions that could potentially have really negative impact on folks, so that's, that's all, thank you.
All right.
I want to address your comment about communication. Anna Lockwood sent you all an email, and you never responded to that email, okay? You had a responsibility, and had there been some communication that might have prevented the conversation we're having tonight, and I would be home with my wife instead of standing here before you, trying to make some cases that would say, support why volunteers should volunteer. That's what was, what failed to happen. Now, I watched that process, and then when we had a meeting that Jennifer invited me to, that I was a part of with Adam Costa, I specifically brought that issue up, did I not, Jennifer, did I not say, did you know there was an email that had been sent suggesting that this issue be a bylaw issue? And if you don't remember that, I understand that.
I don't, I don't recall the conversation.
Okay. All right. Did I not send you another email that says, I have a copy of the emails that I have been asking about this issue of a bylaw? And, you know, you can ask me to do more work as a commissioner, okay? But had the Select Board done what they should have done when they received that message from Anna Lockwood, Adam Costa wouldn't have spent his time on this, you know? And we wouldn't have spent our time on this, and it would have made it much easier for the volunteers that are standing here before you today. You know, I think that, you know, once again, you can vote not to put this before the, the town meeting. I think, I think I can make a case to get it passed, Glenn, and I'm going to tell you why. The Select Board, not with very many of the members that are, in fact, I don't think any of the members that are here today, wanted to do an override on an APDC issue, APDC issue about the windows for the Ritter Building. And we had a big meeting with the town manager and APDC. Tom Alonso came, and they said, well, we're going to put this, you know, you guys are going to turn the window, the, you're going to turn the certificate for approval down, and we're going to implement the one change, one of the changes that was made to the bylaw that says the way the town addresses the issues, you know, that they disagree with the APDC, is to do a town vote. And once again, not wanting to waste time, at the meeting that we had with the former town manager and with Select Board Member Alonso in place, I said, Tom, I says, the last thing you should do is bring this issue before the town, because while they might approve it, they may disapprove it. And when we went to town meeting, I made the case and said, the town should not allow this override to take place. Common sense, I says, you know, we haven't had all the facts, we think the windows are not only historic, but they're still salvageable, and guess what the town voted for? The town did not vote to override the APDC because it meets sense, just like this proposal makes sense. And, and I, and I can assure you that if you do put it before the town on the 18th of November, I will make a passionate plea for, in the name of not wasting volunteer time, to get this done. And then let the process take place. Let the voters decide, if they say no, then we're done with, then, you know, then I think the APDC would say, all right, the town has spoken, we'll have a Historic Commission, we'll have an APDC. But if the town votes in favor of it, then we'll really get the facts, not alternative universe facts, we'll really get the facts about what the Attorney General says about how this would be structured. And in my turn, oh, glau and behold, in my turn, that we're going to consolidate an operation that's been kind of fragmented and become better.
All right. Ma'am, tell me...
I have one more comment, then I'm done with my comments.
No, hold on. Hold on. Let's follow this orderly. The town manager's going to speak. I'm going to see if Ms. Emke has any more questions, and we're going to go to this more, and then, all right.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I was not really moved to speak this evening before, until this last comment, and I cannot let this go without a comment on behalf of the Select Board. I don't think you need me to speak for you, so apologies in advance if you are offended. But on May 13th, the Select Board, myself and others, received an email. That email from Anna Lockwood, that email expressed concerns about the process. It expressed concerns about actions of the APDC in the past. It contained in the call to action the following statement, quote, "The town charter explicitly outlines the procedure for reviewing and amending bylaws, which includes a formal review process every five years as prescribed on Section 7- Periodic Review, Charter and Bylaws in the Town Charter. The committee's role is to make recommendations for substantive changes, which should be reviewed in consultation with legal counsel, followed by the town meeting, submitted to the Attorney General for approval. The changes under consideration here have not adhered to these procedural requirements and as such risk bypassing the transparency and accountability that I, our bylaw review process ensures," end quote. That is not the status to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the board. That is not what your bylaw requires, that was reviewed with town council, that is not what our bylaw requires. Bylaws get passed in the town of Ludenburg nearly every single town meeting without going through the bylaw review committee." The, the email goes on as a call to action, basically requesting that the Select Board not include this on the town meeting warrant. It's certainly a position and a call to action. My question is, there has been a lot of blame levied back and forth. What was the expectation that this body was supposed to do to pick up that ball in May? There was, there was a suggestion that there was something procedurally wrong that was happening, that was investigated, that was found to not be the case? There's, now, this procedure, to be clear, set out in the bylaws, is a floor. You, you can put on as much more forums engagement as you would like, but there is not a requirement that bylaws in the town of Ludenburg go to the bylaw committee. So I, I do take issue with this email continuously being cited as the source of, if there had been a response to this email, all things would have been allayed. I'm not sure that that does that. I think if, if this body, you know, wanted to hear from the APDC, it certainly could, but again, to Ms. Emke's point, nobody, nobody, and we all understand the reasons why, had a copy of this bylaw until they had a copy of it on October 4th.
I mean, I was going to address that, too. Regardless of whether or not anyone responded to that email, we would still be here tonight because we are going through all of the submitted articles, and we are deciding on the warrant, and it hasn't been mailed yet, and that wouldn't have changed regardless. But anyway, Ms. Emke, go ahead. Do you have any more questions?
Um, no questions. I was going to comment, but thank you for, for saying a lot of what I was going to say. Tony, you were on that first email, too.
I was.
A lot of, I think the public is, is... A lot of, I think the public is, is pointing to the select board, we did not submit this article. We saw it. I never saw Carter's draft. I, I don't want, this, this is verging, I want to bring the temperature down. Okay? This is verging on becoming non, unconstructive. I think hopefully we can all agree that a lot of the emotion, a lot of the angst has come about because of maybe people being misinformed or just not, or just uninformed. And some of that goes to communication, which is a victim in this case to the short timeline. I hope that people who know me well enough know and that, and I, I've shared this with, with Ms. Lockwood. I did respond to one of her emails. I, I don't accept us being called deceitful. I don't think anyone in this whole process was deceitful. And that is one thing that I had to respond to. But I didn't respond to the initial email for all the reasons town manager mentioned. But as soon as we got this draft article, I went back to 2015. I did as much as I could to, to investigate the details, to get the facts. And I hope that I have shown that with the, the document that you now see, which is all factual. None of my opinions are in there at all. I never thought something that, when this was first brought before us over a year ago, that it would be so messy, so complicated, so contentious for something that was a very basic, simple, innocent intent. I think a lot of what I'm hearing is people's concerns over personalities, not the letter of the bylaw. Concerns over how this is going to be enforced. 10 years from now, when, I don't, I'm not going to be here probably. It, it's going to be different people. So it's going to be different problems. I mean, I don't know. I, I just never thought that this would become as complicated as it has, especially considering the intent that it started with and the original goal. And I don't like the fact that it escalated to such an emotional, somewhat volatile, name-calling thing.
I do too.
All right. Ms. Moore, go ahead.
I share a lot of the thoughts that our, our other members and the town manager have, have stated. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue to repeat them other than a couple of comments. We are all volunteers. I know, I think I've said this at multiple meetings. You've mentioned your wife and your family. I'm a single mom. I've got three kids at home. So like, everybody gives up something to be at these meetings.
That's exactly.
I don't think that we should be in a place where we're putting each other down. You know, everybody is, and I'm not, I'm looking at you because you're standing here, but in general. I think to remember that we're all volunteers. We all have other things. We have, a lot of us have jobs. We have other things going on. We're doing our best. I think that the people that are involved here are all passionate. They're all volunteers. And I don't want to see people be turned off from volunteering because of these things. So I would also love if we could turn the temperature down. That would be great. I understand why people are passionate about this issue. I also agree. I don't think there was any deceitful intent here. All that said.
Wait, would you please clarify that comment for me?
I don't think there was any deceitful intent.
Yeah. Who do you think, who was called being, who was deceitful?
She's saying that she doesn't believe anyone was.
I don't believe anyone was deceitful.
Okay. All right.
Including you. I don't believe the APDC, the HGC.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, do not believe.
I just, I just wanted to get that clarified.
Okay.
All right.
That said, because of all these other issues, I don't think two weeks is long enough to vet this out. And I know you guys have been talking about this. I've mentioned this in prior meetings. I mean, I, this is what, my third meeting back from my sabbatical dealing with some health issues. So I'm still getting kind of caught back up. But we've only had the language changes for two weeks. And I don't think that that's enough time personally to move this forward. It's not that I'm saying I don't agree or I do agree. And I know that you have done an immense amount of work. I mean, I know I worked with you on the Master Plan Steering Committee and I've followed all of your work with municipal building design. I know you're passionate. I appreciate all of your work. And I don't want you to think that me saying this is putting down your efforts. I just think because of the timeline and that we just have got the actual language, I understand your intent, but I'm worried about unintended consequences. And I think that notifications should be made in terms of people that are in the districts. I know that, I, I also understand, you know, volunteers should be paying attention and reading the minutes, but a lot of people don't. So I think that we, we owe it to our residents to have a more robust conversation about this. I think we've seen that people are really passionate. And as Member Emke just said, I don't think any of us were expecting this to kind of blow up the way that it did. So that is, those are my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. So we're not going to vote on anything right now. Okay? This is just a meeting to discuss. Once we get down to old business, we're actually going to go through the warrant. We'll vote then. So is there anything else that any members or?
I, I have one other comment.
Okay.
This document was shared with Anna Lockwood. It was not shared with me, and I take great offense to that. I can't read the document tonight because I'm having problems with my near vision contact. It's been blurry for the last two days. And it would have been really nice, you want to talk about, you know, communication and, and dialogue and making sure that everybody knows what's going on. It would have been really nice for this document to been, to have been emailed to me like it was to Anna. And I, I think that that's the kind of stuff that makes people not want to be volunteers. I mean, I, I mean, my, my comments are driven here, you know, you can do whatever you want to do. You know, I'm not, trust me, when I leave this podium, I'm going home to go to bed. And then whatever the vote is, the vote will be. And if you want to delay this, but my prediction is, my prediction is, and I've been pretty good at predicting stuff, is that this will have no more priority. I mean, I bugged the hell out of Adam. I bugged the hell out of Jennifer to try and get this so that we would have it before us. I can only do so much as a volunteer. I went to Adam and before I could get to first base with Adam, the former town manager said, nope, you can't be talking about this until you bring this before the select board. And I did. Okay. That's it.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I just, for the public, because they don't know what we're talking about, my email to Anna was in response to an email I received from Anna.
She just sent it to me too.
It was in response to an email I received from Anna. And all that this document is, is going back, starting with March of 2024, the APDC meetings, indicating who was present, what the agenda items were. And it's, it supports your point that the brochure for public outreach, APD merger, all that was on the agenda for every meeting. I ca, I pasted in minutes, excerpts of minutes relevant to the merger, to public outreach, and facts and links to, not links, but the recordings, the timestamps where this topic was discussed. That is all that's in here.
All right.
Well, good. I'm glad because I can't read it, you know? But I still think it would have been fair play to send it to me too. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you both for coming in tonight. Okay. So we still have town council on the line on Zoom here. So I think we've covered the APDC Historical Commission merger pretty well. We have him here to answer any other questions that members may have on any warrant articles. But first, Attorney Costa will ask you if you want to flag any ones in particular that are maybe still in review. Or the town manager, you can jump in here as well.
So Attorney Costa is still reviewing, this, I'm just going to keep that off. It keeps falling. Attorney Costa is still reviewing the entirety of the warrant, which is why we're going to be meeting, one of the reasons why we're meeting on Friday to finalize. He's working on, if we're just going, articles A, B, and C are fairly straightforward. The details will be in the motions. He's working on combining articles D and E into one. He has the technical change for the PAC transfer. It's just changing mechanism. I'm just kind of going through. Okay. So the first one where there was a question, and I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it tonight, Attorney Costa, but the principal assessor was on quickly earlier talking about the 41A deferral article and just the, the threshold at which the circuit breaker can be increased to. Is it only that first 72,000? So there's just that question there. I don't know if you're prepared on that.
So I, I'm not, but I saw your email on it. And so I've got to look into that, but I'll look into it and have an answer for you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. I think, other than that, other than those, and just the general typical review that Attorney Costa does, I think the only other one that was still very much in the air was the noise ordinance article. And there, I received some feedback from the police chief. I received some feedback from the facilities director. I've shared that feedback with Attorney Costa. He has some thoughts. But let me just jump to the punchline here. I think that this is something that at this point is likely not ready for town meeting and does need some more work. But Attorney Costa, this was discussed at the last meeting. And I think that kind of, if you could help flag some of the issue areas or some of the potential areas that we're going to want to look at before bringing this up again, would be helpful, if you don't mind.
Sure. No, I'm happy to do that. So let me give sort of my, my usual introductory remarks as it relates to noise bylaws, because this is certainly not my first rodeo with a noise bylaw. They tend to be challenging to draft and they tend to be controversial to adopt. Having said that, many communities have chosen to adopt noise bylaws and noise ordinances. Generally, these ordinances and bylaws take one of two forms and sometimes they'll, they'll combine the two forms. They tend to be either quantitative or qualitative in terms of how they go about regulating noise. When I say quantitative, I mean defining a, a threshold that can be a weighted threshold as compared to ambient noise levels. That can be just a generic threshold irrespective of ambient noise levels. But usually those are either in reliance upon seeing what other communities have done. So, you know, 40, 50, 60 decibel limitations on, on noise meant to avoid irregular and objectionable noise from yard equipment, things like leaf blowers, or by reference to, for example, the Mass DEP's noise policy, which regulates or restricts noise that is more than 10 decibels above ambient. The, the challenge that exists with quantitative bylaws is that you need some, some mechanism to quantify the potential violations of that bylaw. And that usually means you require a sound level meter. And a sound level meter is not something that most communities have in their possession. And so what that typically means is that you've got to borrow or, or rent a sound level meter. DEP has a number on loan that they can provide to you. But you also need somebody, you need it to be calibrated and you need somebody who's qualified to use it. So the good news is it's an objective standard. The bad news is you've got to jump through hoops to, to enforce. The other type of bylaw is a more qualitative bylaw. And I would say that what I'm looking at here, what's been proposed for, for Lunenburg is, falls into that latter category. A more qualitative bylaw that defines terms like plainly audible or sound amplification system, and then prohibits noise that would emanate from any building, both structure vehicle premises or sound amplification system, which is quote unquote plainly audible. And plainly audible, in the case of your bylaw or your proposed bylaw, is defined as any sound from a source regulated by the bylaw that can be detected above routine and normal ambient background noise by unaided human hearing. So the good news is you don't need a sound level meter to determine whether there's been a violation of that, of that, that standard. The bad news is that's a difficult, somewhat ambiguous, certainly more subjective than objective standard in terms of what is routine and nor, normal ambient background noise and what does it mean to be noise that violates that standard in the sense that it, it can be, it can be recorded or, or heard unaided, unaided by, by human hearing. So that's the challenge with respect to noise bylaws. I reviewed what was proposed here. I think that many aspects of this, of this bylaw are similar to what I've seen adopted in other communities. If we skip over the provisions that address what's prohibited noise for the moment and we skip down to the exemptions, it's not unusual for the exemptions to be quite extensive. Because once you've defined, especially in a subjective manner, the sort of noise that's prohibited, you need to be sure that you're not interfering with sort of day-to-day operations, whether they be day-to-day operations of your, your public safety, personnel, police, fire, DPW, or the sorts of events that you may want to have in your community, like parades or festivals or public gatherings. You don't want to be sure that noises that emanate from safety signals or from authorized vehicle, like vehicles like ambulances aren't going to run afoul of this, of these standards. So your list of exemptions is fairly comprehensive and is generally consistent with what I see in other communities. I've got a few recommendations as to how certain items that you may want to include that are not currently included within your list. You've got a process for, for permitting. I already remarked to Jen, that, to the town manager, that, you know, I wouldn't refer to the permitting as a special permit because that's sort of a term of art that is generally utilized only in the zoning context. And so you don't want to be dealing with special permits or special permit granting authorities and confuse what is a general bylaw with the authority that is derived from the zoning act. So I would just refer to it as a permit, application for a permit, a noise permit, a sound permit, or just a permit. So I might make some tweaks there. Going back up to the actual noise standard, what, what is prohibited noise? There, there's no sort of secret sauce here in my experience. Town manager and I did talk about what I've seen in other communities. She found this and borrowed it from another community and adjusted it accordingly to fit Lunenburg. I took a look at it and I told her that it was, is one of the better bylaws that I've seen. Because there are some that I definitely don't like because I think that the standard is, is too ambiguous or too difficult to enforce. I, I do like this, but I, I still have some concerns about some of the terminology. So I don't know how deep of a dive you want to take into that tonight. If it sounds like the board is not prepared to advance this for a special town meeting, then maybe that's something that can occur offline in the coming months with the goal of maybe having it ready for the annual town meeting. You know, how you want that to occur, whether you want it to be done offline with a representative of the board or between me and, and your town manager and maybe your, your police chief or your fire chief, or whether you want this to occur at meetings of the board. That's sort of up to you as to how involved you want to be in the, in the, the adjustments. But overall, not a horrible bylaw. Is it ready for primetime? I leave that to you. We could make some adjustments and get it to the, get it to the special town meeting. But I do think that some tweaks are necessary.
Yeah. I mean, at least in my opinion, I definitely don't think this is ready to go on the warrant for special town meeting. We do also have the bylaw review committee going on now. We have a periodic bylaw review committee every five years. I think this could be a really good candidate to go to that. Process wise, it doesn't really matter to me too much. But yeah, I don't think this is going to make the warrant, honestly. Any other board members have any questions on this? Or any questions for town council relating to the drafting of this warrant article?
I have lots of thoughts, but if we are not moving this forward, then I can, I can hold them.
Okay.
Other than I am completely against this, I think it's written.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Any other members? Okay. So I think that's where we're at on that one. Okay. Do, well, that's what I was going to ask. Any other members have any other questions relating to warrant articles for town council? Thank you so much for staying with us. Attorney Costa, it's been almost two hours, so we appreciate your time tonight.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Costa. Appreciate your time as always.
Thank you. Of course.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Town manager report.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. For my manager's report tonight, the first topic is an update on the FY '25 closeout. As the board is aware, Eric Kincher CPA has been on board with Lunenburg, assisting us with a contract for various transition items in the finance and accounting office. Part of their task has been assisting with the year-end closeout in preparation of certification of free cash by the Division of Local Services or DLS. As of today, based on As of today, based on a real analysis of where we are in that closeout, we have asked that CPA firm to take 100% of that responsibility off of the staff hands. It's, they are working in many towns right now. Some towns need their free cash to be certified for town meeting, they need to spend it. We are not in a position, we are planning to expend free cash at this town meeting, so we're not in that kind of priority rush that this needs to be rushed, but, so, long story short, the entirety of the FY25 closeout is transferred to Eric Kincherf CPA and his team. Free cash is very unlikely to be certified, although not impossible, but very unlikely to be certified by the special town meeting, although as no appropriations are planned, there should be no impact. A tentative date for the tax classification hearing. For folks that aren't aware in the public, the tax classification hearing is often where folks think that the select board is going to vote to set their tax rate. That is not the vote. The classification hearing is an annual step every year that allows the select board to determine whether there's going to be a residential shift, or whether there's a shift between the different tax classes, between residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. That shift has not historically occurred in the town of Lunenburg, but nonetheless, that vote needs to take place each and every year. The classification, just to be clear, does not increase how much or how little we are taxing the folks, it doesn't change the overall levy, it, it's an apportionment between the different classifications. This hearing must occur before the actual tax bills are mailed out. Tax bills, the actual tax bills, I have December 20th in here, that's typo, December 30th. Actual tax bills are to be mailed out December 30th.
20th would be better.
So, and they are due on February 1st. So, our tentative date for, would be an off-cycle, select board meeting of that November 25th, Tuesday, for this item only, recognizing that this is the week of the Thanksgiving holiday, but allowing that vote to happen just can expedite anything that needs to happen to get the bills out. We will know for sure, I have it in my calendar for, based on the public hearing requirement and how quickly we need to get this into the newspaper, is what's deciding kind of the trigger, whether it's going to be that, we'll know this for sure in next week, whether it's going to go on that date or the following December. But that's the tax classification hearing likely date. I have reported previously that the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health have paused their local nursing hours due to a staffing shortage. We were just notified they're going to pause again through the month of November. Their staffing has improved, they have hired one registered nurse, but they are remaining on pause until they achieve full staffing. Folks are, that need public health nursing services are still able to contact the boards of health, this is just for the onsite nurses. FY2026 state earmarks. So, there were some headlines about a week ago, that Governor Healy is pulling back $125 million in local earmarks that were included in the FY26 state budget, based upon initial revenues not meeting what the expectations were. The town of Lunenburg has two earmarks. One is $30,000 for the public schools to create enhancements and supplement existing guidance counseling, mental health, and special education delivery, and $40,000 for security system upgrades at the public schools. We have not been notified whether our two earmarks are included in that bucket of the $125 million. There is no list that I have been able to find of where that is, when I, it's not like nine C cuts where you can look and see where those nine C cuts were. But I was contacted today by Representative Scarsdale, who said that the money is flowing to the agencies now, so, once the earmarks are voted by the legislature, depending on where they're apportioned, each state agency gets that pot of money, and then they distribute it out to the communities in accordance with their own rules. So, she informed us that that's starting to happen now, and the suggestion was to get your request in early for your release of money, so I started that process today. The chairman had spoken about the master plan steering committee final public meeting, October 22nd, tomorrow night, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Smokestack Roasters. This is the final opportunity for folks to weigh in on the master plan that's been under development for several years. That plan, that plan process is online at planlunenburg.org. But after this, the committee will be really finalizing all of their findings with the consultant, but there's, other than talking about the final report, this is, as far as I'm aware, the last opportunity for public input. Trick-or-treat hours are Friday, October 31st, Halloween, from 6:00 to 8:00. Project updates, so TC Passios decommissioning, construction on the firewall to the area that's going to be decommissioned began last week. There was some plumbing and sprinkler work that needed to occur, which we needed to do a small asbestos abatement first before that work can get underway, and that has occurred, and the plumbers are scheduled for this week. I wish that the historic commission was still present in the room, because the town hall weather vane, as folks have heard about the replica weather vane for a long time, so the replica weather vane for town hall is one step closer to installation. The finial that houses the weather vane was in exceptionally poor condition and could not take the, take the new weather vane installation. So, that finial is going up to a specialist woodshop up in Maine, where there will be a reproduction crafted to approximate the original, and then we will, I'm sure, have, once it's back and we have a plan, I'm sure there will be some kind of ceremonial event for the placement of the weather vane once again on town hall. So, the next project is the access control. I've been reporting for a time that their access control project for all of our buildings has been delayed due to parts. The long-awaited parts have now shipped, they're starting to be installed. Once the installation is complete, the system will be programmed and activated, and we will no longer have keyed buildings. Wallace Park playground repair over the summer, I had reported that there was damage at Wallace Park due to a vehicle. The fence has been repaired and the playground equipment has been shipped. And for those who have not ventured into Ritter Building lately, it is getting an interior facelift in the form of fresh paint. So, many of the halls and offices have already been painted with more to go, but although we have a building project on the horizon, there's some things that just need to happen nonetheless. Recruitment, so, some changes here. So, payroll and benefits is still posted at 36 hours per week. Assistant town accountant at 32 hours per week has an offer pending as of today. Dietary aid is posted at nine hours per week. Intermittent heavy equipment operator is still posted. The land use director, there's interviews scheduled, or an interview scheduled on Thursday for that position. Administrative assistant in the building department, there's an offer pending, an administrative assistant in the planning department, there's an offer pending. So, those two offers went out today. So, three offers in total went out today. Hopefully, I'll be reporting back to you some appointments at your next meeting. The vacancies on boards and committees remain unchanged from my last report, and so in the interest of time, I am not going to read those.
All right, any questions for the town manager?
Any updates on the Flat Hill?
Um, so, hold on a moment, let me think of this. The last public update was that we had issued a notification terminating the agreement. As you can imagine, once such a notification goes out, attorneys get involved. Attorneys are very much involved again. I had four emails alone today on the subject. So, I appreciate the public's interest in this. I think that we need to accept that at this point, the bridge will remain closed for the foreseeable future, and there won't be an update until there's an update. And that's, we have to get through this phase before we can start the next phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, discussion and vote on special town meeting warrant and booklet. So, let's just start from the top and go through them. So, Article A, reports on committees included in the warrant, voted, recommended approval. Same thing for B, amending FY26 budget. C, prior year expense included, deferred, should hold off on that. D and E are the two that we're still talking about merging, so that's going to be a Friday one. F, same thing pretty much, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Cemetery transfer, we voted. Project estimators, so we voted on that to include it, we deferred until the source of funding is determined, is that...
It's going to be old capital.
Okay.
It's going to be an old capital. It's not going to be free cash, and it's not going to be an appropriation. So, it's going to be an old capital item that's not being used.
Okay. So, do we want to keep this as a deferral?
Yeah, until we have...
The actual motion, yep.
Okay.
We generally defer until we have the actual numbers, right?
Yeah.
You have the, so the number's 50,000.
Yeah, we have the number.
It's 50,000, I had said last time that that's what they need, they need 50,000.
Oh, it's just, uh...
It's the funding source, it's the which particular capital...
Oh, I was confusing it with the other one that included the stormwater.
Yeah.
Like the multiple, okay.
Yeah.
No, so, if we have the number, right?
Special education reserve fund, so, we voted to include this in the warrant, we voted to recommend approval, and then we changed that to a deferral. We did invite the superintendent, because I wanted to get some, you know, an opportunity for members to ask questions, because we ended up deferring that, because a member requested that. She wasn't available tonight. So, do we want to just leave this as a deferral?
I don't know, I think the reason for deferral was to wait for the finance committee hearing, is that right? That was the main...
Yeah, or just more information in general.
I, maybe because I watched the school committee and heard them discuss it, and I've heard this brought up in the past. I mean, I would, I would be willing to vote on it tonight. It's not going to be, it's not, um...
Funded.
Right.
No, but what's, no financial impact. So, it wouldn't, I wouldn't expect finance committee...
It doesn't have a financial impact in its adoption.
This, this article, the next one, funded, obviously.
But I think that could also be open to interpretation, right? Creating it as a financial impact with the assumption that it's going to be funded at some point in time, so who knows how that's going to go?
I don't know, I mean, I'm okay voting on it as a, creating a fund.
Yeah, as am I.
Because how much do we have to do on Friday? How many, that's our last time to vote?
Oh, you have the entire S A P.
Can we vote on as much as we can?
Yeah, I was going to say, the, going to the project estimators, if we have the number, then can we vote tonight too?
We can, if, hey, it's up to us, if we want to make this recommendation...
I would go back to that and at least, yeah, see if we want to vote.
For me, I mean, we have the dollar amount, we know what is going to...
Yeah, I was thinking of another article, because I'm tired.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to recommend approval for H, project estimators?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article H.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right, so going back to special education reserve fund, I also am more than prepared to vote on this. What about other members? Mr. McLeod?
Yeah, I just, I just would like more information. My concern would be that it would have a negative impact on the budget if they were, you know, not funding that line item for special education, knowing that there may be like a $200,000 slush fund, if you will, or reserve fund, I should say.
I'm ready to vote. Like we had said earlier, it doesn't have a financial impact at this point until a future article shows up.
And I just didn't see as addressing a specific need, whatever, if an out-of-district student moves in, we've got to cover that cost regardless.
Yeah, I mean, this has come up during the budget task force discussion last year as well, so I know it's been thought about and discussed. So, I'm maybe more familiar with it than some others, so I'm perfectly fine voting on it tonight.
Okay, Ms. Moore?
I'm fine voting on it, sorry.
Okay, so I will move to recommend approval on Article I.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Nope.
Oh, my bad, I was going too fast there. All right, so we recommend approval four to one. Okay. Forty-one A, deferral. So, this is still being reviewed, so we should hold off on, should we hold off on this one?
Up to the board.
Yeah.
So, you're, the, there's two options of this article. One is going to have the income threshold increased on all three criteria, if it's allowed. The other is going to increase it just to the one if that's all the statute caps it at. So, it's going up to the statute, what the statute allows.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's either, they, it's either going, so you have forty-one A, deferral, income threshold currently is 20,000. Circuit breaker calls out, the, let me step back. The legislative body, town meeting, can vote to increase that income exemption. That's what this article does. This article's purpose is to allow town meeting to weigh in on increasing that income requirement. This, it says that it's, what we're reading is, it says that up to the single non-head of household amount. That single non-head of household amount is 72,000. If that's where the legislation says, as far as we can take it, that's as far as we're taking it. If that, if our read, if Adam weighs in and says our read is incorrect, then it's going to go to the full circuit breaker for the other criteria. There's nothing, I, I don't think that that decision is going to change the way that you're feeling about whether or not to include this on the warrant or not. I don't think, but...
It doesn't for me. So, first of all, let's just start with including it in the warrant. I move to include, is this so aye, aye?
It's, it's not...
Is that what I'm seeing? Or am I looking at it wrong?
It's still aye, aye, because this one was...
Okay. I move to include Article I, aye, the forty-one A deferment in the warrant.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I'm ready to recommend approval for this. Either way, I don't think my opinion on this is going to change, I think this is going to be really good for seniors, and if the language changes, so be it, we can discuss it on Friday.
I think this was one of the ones that we were waiting for the assessor to come in, which she did today, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, I move to recommend approval for the forty-one A deferment.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. J, twenty-one, Main Street easement, that's in the article, we voted unanimously, same with K, Kids Kingdom. Okay. L, APDC Historical Commission merger. So, I think the first question we have to ask is whether or not this should be in the warrant, where are we at on that? Mr. McLeod?
I would vote to remove it.
Okay. Mr. Leighton?
I would like to see it on the warrant.
Ms. Emke?
I'm okay putting it on the warrant.
Okay, Ms. Moore?
I would like to remove it.
All right, so here I am as a swing vote, I wasn't anticipating that. So, where am I at on this?
I'm sorry, Ms. Renee said to put it, keep it.
Yep. Where am I at on this? So, I will say that the list of concerns for me has increasingly gone up. Meanwhile, the list of benefits for doing this has remained at one, and that's a stated benefit. I don't think that the best way to fix legitimate quorum issues that the Historical Commission is experiencing is merging the Historical Commission and the APDC. And I do think that this was brought up as an idea and explored in good faith by volunteers who are doing the best work that they believe they can do for the town. So, my list of concerns, where are we at for my concerns? I have real concerns over the difference between historical preservation and architectural preservation. And if you go back and you watch the meetings, which I know a lot of us have done, when it was sold to the public, it was never supposed to be about historical preservation, it was supposed to be about architectural preservation. It wasn't about the materials that you would use, it was about the look and the feel and the character of the town. And I know for a fact, this doesn't apply to me, because I don't live in the district, a lot of residents who live in the district strongly believe that the APDC is already enforcing this bylaw too strictly. So, that's an existing issue, and I think Mr. Lockwood put it really well. I really liked what he said, I wrote this down, quote, "The culture of the board that's enforcing it matters." And if we give it to the Historical Commission, I do think it's going to swing more towards historical preservation, and this is already a really strong point of contention for residents in the district. So, I don't really know if I believe giving it to the Historical Commission is a good idea for enforcement. Now, all these concerns that I have are reasons to not support the article itself. I do have some more. I'm also concerned that the Historical Commission isn't prepared to enforce this bylaw. So, it's, you know, I mean, it, there's a lot in there, and the appeal process is to go to court, so it can't be taken lightly. I've really learned this past couple of weeks, or have been reminded, that most... I've really learned this past couple of weeks or have been reminded that most residents are not in tune as much as people who volunteer for this town are. And that's okay. It's not the fault of any residents that they weren't watching every single meeting of the Architectural Preservation District Commission to know that this was in the pipeline. So people are truly shocked and truly concerned that this is potentially being considered in a matter of weeks. And I feel that concern, it's real. Lastly, I'm concerned about what this is going to be like at town meeting. Now, let's remember, special town meeting starts at 7:00 PM. Now, we can say that if it goes on for three hours, which when you really think about it, we've been here already for three hours, and it's not that long of a time to get through town meeting. We all know that. Ten o'clock is still late, but realistically, we know that that's early and that we're going to go on a lot longer than that. This conversation tonight went on for a very long time. So I'm just imagining what that's going to be like on the floor of town meeting and how it's going to affect the rest of town meeting. The Select Board is the gatekeeper of the warrant, and that's something that I do not take lightly because I don't want to be a gatekeeper for things that volunteers bring to us in good faith, which I do believe is the case here. However, watching this discussion take folds already is making me believe that I have to preserve town meeting and the effectiveness and the productivity of town meeting. And that, I think, is really at stake here. So I am leaning towards not putting this on the warrant, and that's where I'm at as well. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would make the motion to remove Article L, the APDC article, from the warrant.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
No.
The motion passes three to two. All right. Notice of town meeting. It's on the warrant and it was recommended approval, noise ordinance. So I don't think this is ready to go on this warrant. Anyone disagree? Okay.
You need a motion to?
No, we never voted to put it on the warrant. MBTA zoning, um, did we vote to recommend approval last week?
No.
No, okay.
You, you voted to wait until the planning or public hearings.
That's right, the public hearing, okay. So we'll leave it at that. And the same thing for this other one. And then Q, okay. So this is SAP position titles and grades for the conservation agent, land use director, and the temporary assessor position. So we deferred until we have the opportunity to speak to Linda, the principal assessor. Do members still have questions on this?
Labor Council is reviewing all three of these articles.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't know that this was still, this one.
Yeah.
Okay. So we might as well just leave that for tonight then because we're going to have to discuss those for Friday anyway, unless there are other questions or conversation that members would like to bring up.
I, I guess the only thing that I want to say through you to the members.
Sure.
Is that you have in your, in your drive here SAP for town meeting personnel committee, SAP for town meeting changes other than the personnel committee. If there is anything that folks would like changed, Attorney Terry is working on this Thursday. So you have, the window is getting increasingly smaller. I know we've discussed these now for four or five meetings, at least in theory, but if there is any questions either now or by Thursday morning, if there's anything lingering.
Are there any changes since we've discussed this?
No, he's gonna, so in his, in his reviews, in his initial reviews, we had a meeting Monday, I think. I don't, was that yesterday?
Taste juice next.
So he's, um, he did not think that there would be many substantive changes or corrections at all to the personnel committee bylaw. He did have a few edits that he knew he was going to be making around the other changes. They're definitely going to be putting in language around effective dates. So some things would be effective upon passage, but some things that are benefit would be effective July 1st because people are already in the system in the year to make a transition. And then the vacation language, treating that similar to the treatment of the police collective bargaining associate, uh, agreement with the transitional time and giving people a little bit of flexibility there to allow us to buy it off if the town had funds.
So we'll see that after he reviews it on.
He's, he said he will finish this by end of business Thursday, and by end of business, he was not promising that that was much before this hour. So, late Thursday night, you'll get it Fri, as soon as I have it, you will get it to review on Friday. If in your review, there are, I, I will have an opportunity to grab him before four o'clock. We're just not, we don't have much time after that. Now, all that to say, the reality is, is that this article and the next article are 17 pages long each. So putting the full text of 17 pages in the book is a discussion that I wanted to kind of explore here tonight. There is nothing to say as shown on, you know, uh, let me just pull up. Where you would have an article that would have the introductory language, uh, blah, 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 come on. To say, to see if, oh, I'm just going to, to see if the town would vote to amend the SAP to, uh, blah, 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 as shown on the document on file with the town clerk. Okay, so that is, or, which would obviously be posted online as well. But in order to, so two choices. We can print 34 pages of these two bylaws to be included in the book, or we can shorten up that substantially, give and refer to it another document.
I'm in favor of saving the trees.
Right, me too.
And referring to another document.
Yeah, it'd be over 30 pages.
As long as it's available online, which I think the whole warrant should be online, but as long as the language is online. And then we have copies available here for those that might not be able to access it online.
Yep, and then of course, there would be, this is similar to where you have an article that deals with a map, like a zoning map, and that map is on file with the town of, town clerk for inspection. I say that because I want to be very clear to everybody that we're finalizing a warrant. The warrant is to warn the inhabitants of the town of Lunenburg that there is a town meeting that's coming up. The warrant is, just like an agenda, is to apprise folks of what may be discussed under each of these warrant articles. It is totally okay to find things, to suggest things between the finalization of the warrant and when those motions are made. So just to be really clear, that doesn't, that's not uncommon, and it happens routinely.
And the, the details will be presented at town meeting.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it's, it's really about printing 34 pages.
Yeah, as long as the information shared at town meeting and available prior.
All right, I'm in agreement as well. Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You're okay with that? Okay. All right, anything else we need to discuss on the warrant tonight? Okay. Discussion on tri board meeting of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee. I don't think there's anything to discuss. We still need to figure out when the next meeting, at the end of November, or I don't know, how we're, how we're going to push that schedule back a little bit.
November's getting tight, yeah.
Yeah, it is. So there's nothing really to report on that.
So, but have we decided, are we going to split school and the general government?
Well, we do, I think we do.
I don't know how we can keep within the timeframe.
Yeah, right.
It's just a matter of who goes first.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Minutes, do we have any minutes? I don't think so.
You do not.
We did not, okay. No warrants either?
No.
Any action items?
Not from me.
From the board?
No.
All right. May reports?
I'll keep mine short. I, I had the NPO meeting last Wednesday. There was a couple of interesting points that I did forward off to the town manager and the DPW manager for their review. And I did go to the libraries meeting on Thursday that actually went to 10:30, from 6:45 to 10:30, but a very, another very dedicated group in town that work goes unnoticed sometimes, the, the commitment that the board has. And I think that's, that's it.
The Board of Assessors met last week. They're meeting tomorrow as well. They did have a volunteer, Brian Marple, who's interested in joining the board, so that was exciting. Financial overview, they had personal property growth of 68, 68 million assessed value, approximately equating to 979,000 approximately tax, tax dollars. Residential, commercial, industrial growth at 398,000. Total estimated growth approximately 1.3 million in valuation. The new interim adjustments were introduced. Single-family homes increased by 2.6%. Condos, 4.5%. Two-family homes, 2.6%. Three-family homes, 2.5%. Land value, 2.5%. They talked about chapter land and byland review, bylaw review. That was it for the, for the Board of Assessors. Also, for the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, they met yesterday. Much of the discussion was with the town manager. Some of the highlights, hopefully we could do less storage. It was all about getting all the employees under one roof. The town clerk vault should be bigger. Archiving off-site would be fine. The first floor should be more of the, the common, common things that all citizens would go to. Second floor, maybe it'd be more of the, the land use type things that not everybody would be using. Security, we talked about security as well. Trying to think, I don't want to hit up everything, but yeah, I think the town manager did a great job. I don't know if you, you had anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think it was a good discussion. I think, um, I think that we're going to probably be ways away from knowing which direction, but I think that although we're resetting a little bit, I think it was all good discussion. The only one other thing is that the real need to not, to, to be true to the requirements of the ADA and to make sure that our buildings are fully equal and accessible to all.
Yeah, and I think both the superintendent and the town manager were very flexible. I think we have a lot of options to try to get creative and try to reduce the price as well. So we're doing tours next week and then we'll be of the Ritter and the Town Hall, and then we're going to be meeting again the first Monday of the month, next month. That's all I have. Oh, and the school committee met, but I didn't watch the whole YouTube yet.
Nothing to report other than Finance Committee and Stormwater Task Force meet Thursday this week.
And I don't have a committee report. Upcoming meeting, so we will be meeting this Friday at 4:00 PM. Uh, it is, and it is in person, so members of the public are more than welcome to attend that. They have nothing else to do on a Friday night, like we don't, and, sorry. And then November 4th as well. And then after that, that's our last meeting before town meeting, I believe. November 18th, special town meeting at 7:00 PM. Public comment, is there any public comment from the public? Mrs. Lockwood?
On the Lockwood, 91 Main Street, if my phone dies, I'm going to go get my, the copy of my comments that I texted my husband. So my name came up a lot, you know, I was, I didn't have an opportunity to talk, so here I am, had to stay. Let's start with the Historical Commission, you know, lack of quorum. Last year, before I volunteered for the Council on Aging, I volunteered to be with, in the Historical Commission along with Heather Soroka, and we were told the commission had full membership. So that story of, you know, them not having full membership, I'll leave that negative information. Literally, there was appointment to me, and then there was, oh, it's, we are full. So, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't buy that. In terms of, you know, why did this become such a huge issue? Let's think about last year again, the water district. I mean, Renee, you were, you were heavily involved on that. You spoke against the water district plans to put up, I don't even know what they were doing, to set up a plant somewhere. And you saw how much passion that brought with the, you know, the, because these, these things affect people's ability to use their property. And those will always bring up big emotions. You felt that. Ms. Bertrand felt that. It's just how it is. It is the, it is the, the nature of the beast. If you're talking about people's, other people's property, they are going to be interested and it's going to be meaningful conversation. The, you know, there is a, a thing about process. I, I, it's interesting how Mr. Scullambrini, and I am critical of him, he's a good volunteer, but it doesn't mean he's perfect. I'm a volunteer. I'm not perfect. You are volunteers, and, you know, I don't think you're perfect. I mean, Jesus is perfect, but that's it. And, you know, I could see this coming. That's why I've been mailing up you guys about this, about not bringing the public in for about six months. And the reason I always included you on those emails is because this is a public, the APDC is appointed by you. If they do these things that I don't agree with, I can't vote them out. I can't create a campaign. So I'm keeping you, the people that are responsible for appointing them, in the loop about what's going on and what are my concerns, as I would if they were the, if they were elected officials. That's, that's why you guys have been here. But I could see this coming six months ago, when I first emailed you, that we need to pull the public in. And whatever that landed, I don't think, I honestly don't think, and this is, you know, I, it's, look, I, I'm sorry, I can't manage people's feelings. I honestly don't think Mr. Scullambrini had the desire to get, really get a public input because he knew about this, as Renee pointed out. One thing I will point out, and I talked about it yesterday briefly when I was at their meetings, they had a conference call with town council. The reason I may have put information out that's not correct, I did not have the opportunity to have that, that conversation and to ask town council about my concerns on this. These meetings are usually done. Town council has come to so many public meetings to address concerns of residents. Why was that done in a conference call away from the public? I don't know. But that, that shroud of secrecy that maybe you don't want it to be looked at as secrecy, it comes across that way because we have had other processes that are much more open, inclusive, and transparent, and brings accountability. So the last thing I want to mention, you know, Ms. Warren, thank you for reading the, my, my last, you know, the last paragraph from my email. I think, you know, I, I think sometimes I, I need you to take the lawyer hat off to understand what is that I'm trying to convey. I'm not trying to convey on that email that you must follow the, the bylaw review, but that is the most open, transparent way to address big changes to bylaw. It is the way that has always been done.
That's not true.
I'm sorry?
That is not true.
What's not true, please?
That is not the way that bylaws all go to town meeting. We have other bylaws on this warrant tonight that are not following that process.
I, okay, what I said was, that's a way to bring substantive change, and that is true because we have had others.
That's not what I was saying was untrue, Ms. Lockwood.
Okay, Ms. Lockwood, just conclude your public comment.
Well, I mean, she's the one who replied to me, so, so, you know, talk with your town manager.
So just please.
And I've been subject of conversations on this stage for, you know, for a couple hours, so I, I feel I have the right. So it is true, we have had bylaw review, we have had charter reviews in order to review. and with the purpose, the entire purpose of all my emails have been transparency, public engagement. Why would anyone have issues with that? I don't think there should be. So let's take the lawyer, you know, I'm going to start, you know, with a term of legal lipstick, which is, you know, whenever we don't want to talk about something, we're just going to say, oh, legally, we don't have to. Let's just do the best that we can.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lockwood.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Are there any other public comments from the public? Okay. Mr. Bowen?
White. Hi, John Bowen, one sixty-two Highland Street. How are you?
Fantastic. How are you?
Great. I know it's been a long meeting, trust me, I'm going to be quick. Okay? Water District, APDC, Hickory Hills, these are all groups, okay, that we have in town that I hear all the time, okay? The Water District is separate from everybody else. APDC is separate from everybody else. Hickory Hills, even though, look, Hickory Hills is a little different, they have their own, you know, HOA and all that other stuff over there, so that's understandable with some of the different, you know, situations in that place. But listening to what's going on here tonight, I was kind of disturbed, because I'm wondering about the underserved public that we have in town, where we have eight hundred to twelve hundred voter turnout in an election, two hundred people, two hundred and eighty people max at town meeting. We have thirteen thousand residents here in town who I don't think are being representative, and all these groups are talking about their little blocks, okay? The lack of volunteers in towns is because the involvement of thirteen thousand people is not being done. And that's what you're getting. You're getting the good old boys running around saying, oh, it's not me, it's not me, it's my club, it's your club, okay? The problems with appointments and things like that are definitely, definitely the issues, okay? Residents, okay, social media abuse, that's a result of the moderators of the social media groups, okay? The town should be sending them legal letters telling them they are not to sit there and elicit town information on their groups. Those are private groups, that's not a place of free speech. The group moderators are one hundred percent responsible for the content, and if they allow inflammatory content, Ms. Town Manager, like you said that some inflammatory things were said, right, that's not a place to argue, it's a place to shut down. Now, the other issue is, everybody says, don't do that, not in my backyard. Again, that's a good old boy club mentality. What this town needs is an elected mayor and wards. And I warned about this a couple of years ago, that if there were going to be thousands and thousands of people underserved in this town as a result of not them participating for whatever reason, then they're the ones that need representation. In this town, these elected officials should take that into consideration, Select Board, okay, that this place should be broken up into wards, so that those people in those areas are getting representation, and not just all the individual cliques, groups, and, oh, it's me, it's them. That's what we've been hearing, and it's disgusting. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Peace, I hope we can hear you this time.
Uh, yeah. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Son of a gun. Bob Peace, eleven winner, Green Court. I'd like to thank the board for deferring.
Sorry, just name an address before you begin.
He just did.
Oh, I didn't hear him.
Bob.
Oh, my apologies, Mr. Peace. Go ahead. Sorry for interrupting.
That's quite all right. Bob Peace, eleven winner, Green Court. I'd like to thank the board for deferring the APDC Historical Commission merger. I will always be opposed to this merger. The historical, I mean, to me, the huge change in the bylaw is you took out the word architectural over and over again, and you replaced it with historical. Architectural means that the windows in the Ritter building could have looked the same, but not been, you know, like, single pane, individual pieces of glass, you know, in between the, the finials or whatever you call those pieces of wood. And, but a, a historical commission, you know, they say, oh, you got, you got to have that. And to me, that's not the way the APDC was sold to the public. I think we already have problems with the APDC, like, like people have been reporting, because you have members of the Historical Commission who are applying Historical Commission standards to architectural decisions. And so that's my two cents. I'm sorry I couldn't get through before. Thank you for listening.
Of course. Thank you so much. All right. I'm seeing no other public. Is there a public comment from the town manager?
No.
Is there a public comment from the board?
I would just like to thank the public for their thoughtful input. It has certainly shaped my position on the APDC article, and it just underscores how important public input is.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, just a short comment of, to explain why I voted to put it on the warrant. I came in waiting, you know, to see what Attorney Costa would say. And his answers, there was only one substantive change in the bylaw that was being proposed,